All right, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting, which is study session for April 21st.
Are we okay, Bethany?
Yeah.
All right. And we're gonna start out with public comment on agenda items, and I see, is that a possibility here? We have Claudia Worth with us.
She's with the agenda item.
Oh, well, you're in the agenda item, so you're not gonna do public comment, 'cause you are an agenda item. All right. Well, let's check if there's anybody else here that needs to speak on any agenda items, and I don't see any. So, let's go ahead with the Historical Society's item. And, um, do you have somebody for us?
Yeah, I can introduce. It looks like Claudia's passing some information out, too. I'll just do a quick introduction. If you remember, council during a budget process last year, council, there was consensus to bring this forward at a future study session to discuss the Wheat Ridge Historical Society and providing some type of financial and/or other resource help. Joyce Manwaring put together a packet of information that is in your packet that you received, just a little bit of history of our relationship with the Historical Society, and a few agreements that are in place. And maybe I'll let Joyce just kind of introduce it quickly, too, on just a little bit of history of what we have in front of them.
Well, as in your memo states, we have several agreements that council's entered into over the years with the Historical Society. The first one being in June 1987, which outlined the responsibilities of the city and the society based on programming and artifacts and maintenance of the facility. At that time, we had the Sod House and Museum, I believe. The second one is when the Bah House was purchased, and that's just to give you an example of an enabling resolution that council passes to acquire property. And then attachment number three was a contract brought forward to outline how the funding for the restoration of the Bah House was going to occur. And that's basically what is in your packet as background information. The Bah House and the Sod House are on the National Register of Historic Places. The Richard Hard Estate is as well, but it is not part of any partnership with the Historical Society. The city operates and maintains the Richard's Hard Estate.
Okay. It seems to me that the job before us is that we have to make a determination as to how we should support historical preservation of the records that are available to us. And that's what our discussion is about. Does somebody have something they want to add to that? Mr. Tuttulio?
So, back on December 8th, we tried to put it on the agenda for a quick discussion. I have the minutes here, but Claudia, you had mentioned that you were looking for a part-time person to help support your programs at the Historical Park.
Right.
If the light's on, it's on, yeah. Thanks. So, what I wanted to talk to the city manager about was, we already have a program where we have summer help or part-time help, but a budget already set up for that for parks where we can do part-time employees. Would that be available, to use that fund and that process to help with the parks and the Historical Society, you know, hiring through that process?
Yeah, that would be one means. If, you know, we do budget temporary staffing funds, so it's not hiring of a full-time equivalent or a part-time equivalent, but Joyce could probably speak to this a little bit more than I could. But, yeah, we have temporary dollars for staffing available for seasonal help and other type positions for numerous parks and rec activities.
And so, the question would be, is if council agreed to this, we would just probably add some additional monies to that fund so that that funding could be used for that position? Would you?
That's an option. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I think we also need to know, what is that job description? I think we have something here, did I see?
I just sent a job description around.
Okay. Do you want to discuss that a little bit?
Well, you know what, I didn't run a copy off for me.
Here.
Okay, thanks. Now, I'll give it back to you. Let me give you a little bit of background first. I'm Claudia Worth, in case a lot of you don't know. I've been at the Historical Society since 1977. I gave a history on Firdale School, and I became a member that night. The next meeting, I was on the board, and shortly thereafter, I was a vice president. And I've been vice president or president off and on ever since Charlotte, I think it was president, 16 years now, as her vice president. So, it's 37 years I've been there, taking care of all these buildings. We now have five buildings on the property. We have the post office, the original post office, it was built in 1913. That's our library, and we have, we're responsible for the Judge Johnson collection, which is pretty extensive. And we keep it all in order, and it's all been kept, or inventoried and all that. It's got some interesting stuff in it, boy, let me tell you. He kept everything he ever did in the five counties. And so, that's, we have that over there, and all the school, there's just a massive amount of information in the post office. And we run the museum, do the displays, and the Sod House. And the shed has implements in it that we've collected that were used on the farms, and I've gotten really kind of particular. If it wasn't used in Wheat Ridge, and it isn't functional, we don't accept it anymore. And then we have the log cabin, which was Judge Johnson's cabin, and it was moved from Johnson's Park in 1982, I think. We restored the Soddy and the cabin in 1983. I did, I do have a minor in history, and our hours of operation are really short. Like many museums, we're only open on Fridays from 10:00 until 3:00. And if somebody shows up at 3:00, then we're open until 4:00. And that happens quite a bit. And I sent around a fact sheet describing the different historical sites in Wheat Ridge. The Tower of Memories is also a national historic site, but it's in Jefferson County. I always claimed it because it was closest to us, nobody else ever claimed it. So, I always kind of claim it with that little thing with it. And then I sent around the job description, and in your packet is just some background information about what we do. There's also a CD in there, and many of you might have seen it on Channel 8 before. It's called "They Came Looking for Gold That We Made in 1997." It gives the history of why the city is put together the way it is, and a lot of the history of the buildings and stuff. The first thing I want to say, and I forgot to put it in here, is because we work with kids, anybody that is hired should have a background check. Now, 20 years ago, I would have never thought about that. But now, Charlotte and I both have background checks through our church, 'cause we work with kids at the church, so we're cleared. But anybody we hire should have a background check. They should have an intense interest in Colorado, Jefferson County, and Wheat Ridge history. Some previous experience would be helpful. Council people, you know, you know a lot about Wheat Ridge. A training of several months will be necessary. Willing to keep the Historic Park and the Bah property open five days a week, one day being Saturday. The properties are closed between the second Tuesday in December until after New Year's. We also close on snow days if the schools are closed. The properties, and when I say properties, I mean the Bah House property along with the Historic Park. Properties are closed, I said that. They must be willing to be part of the team and adapt to the changes as members come and go. When I first started at the Historical Society, you didn't touch anything, you didn't move anything. The old ladies wouldn't let you do anything down there. They had set it up, and until they pretty much died off, you didn't move anything. They need to be able to put displays together in the different buildings. Displays should have a name and a printout to go with them. Work processing is a must, and able to be kept, to keep the website updated. I'll probably keep that updated until I die, I don't know. Good people skills are, and able to interpret and explain the history of Wheat Ridge, the different buildings who lived in them, and how and when they were built, and are moved to the property. Patience with little children is a must. You cannot believe the questions that we get. Able to work with volunteers and put their ideas and skills to use in the operation of the museum. Able to work as a liaison between the city staff and the Historical Society. They'll have to learn about preserving documents for research, something that the Historical Society is known for. We get many students coming from Tom Noel's classes to do research on, for their final papers or for papers for him. They've been coming down there for years. We also know for, are known for sharing the information we have with the public. If you've been into a couple of the new restaurants, they've got pictures in there. We've lent them our pictures, and they've copied them. And the bank, oh. It's not Fort Wayne, what's that other bank up on Young Field? Jerry? Yeah, Wells, I always have to think of galloping horses. Wells Parko also has pictures that we gave them. We have a large collection of historical research documents, books, maps. We collect abstracts and other materials. These must be kept in order and updated as new information is donated or brought to the museum. Many, many, many people come down now. Do you have a picture of my grandma? Well, what was her name, you know, we gotta get the name, and then we look in. First, we look in, we have a large collection of Wheat Ridge High School yearbooks and a couple other yearbooks. And then we just research our files, and we have a genealogy file set up. And as people obnote, or if they want us to keep a genealogy file on them, we have a file set up for them. And we, every time that name comes up, it goes in the genealogy file.
Sounds like, it sounds like a much bigger need than I think, that I was thinking of when we started.
I didn't take you to the post office, Joyce, 'cause
Yeah.
it's kind of hairy to get in there. I can't get in there right now because I'm arcane, but they tore off the porch. Right as I got volunteers, Joyce.
You need that, Joyce.
You didn't know about it either, I'm sure. Yeah, need to replace.
You have, you have given us a pretty extensive list. I think we thought we were gonna get by with not that much to do, but it looks like there's quite a bit needs to be done there. Do we have some additional questions? Mr. Urban?
I'll just ask quickly, what would be the rate of pay, or what's the? I'm just, and I understand the dollar amount that we're looking at, but trying to figure out what type of hours and what's the rate of pay that we're looking at?
10 to 3, 10 to 3, five hours a day, five days a week.
What would the hourly rate be, you think?
And I kind of figured it at $10 an hour. If you were to hire a professional, you're looking at between $60,000 and $75,000 or plus a year. So, college, I don't think, you know, a couple of years of college, or they could be going to college and studying history, or something like that. But mostly it's just knowing it and being around it and learning it.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
How are these records cataloged?
Well, we started out with a card catalog, and they're almost, all of them are card cataloged. And now, I've been putting them on the computer so that they're easier.
What software program are you using for the computer?
Excel.
Excel.
Excel and Word.
Are they cataloged by Dewey number, or?
No, we don't use Deweys. No, we set up a, the catalog number I set up was if they're cataloged by, who gave them was given a number. And at that time, we had, this is 37 years ago, we had no inventory. And when I was an inventory clerk, so I set it up. First number is a donor, the second number is the number of the item they gave. Some of them gave hundreds of items. And then the next number is the date. And so, and then, then they're filed Bible logic. Because sometimes you get people working there that are very intelligent but can't file A, B, C, D. And so, that's what I'm doing now, is I'm categorizing. So, all the kitchen equipment is together, and all the plows and stuff like that are together, all the books, that kind of thing.
So, the searchability would be through a column in the Excel file? Are you putting a description in a column, and that's the only way that you could look something up? If you?
Yeah, or I can pretty much take you to the file and say, it's here. The Johnson collection now is a little bit more difficult, because when we first started acquiring the Johnson collection, it was a box here and a box there, because kids were setting the Johnson cabin on fire, and that was his library. So, the city at that time, in 1970s, early 70s, kind of put a box here and a box there, and so, they came into us like that. And we put them in acid-free envelopes, and then the acid-free envelopes are in a buyer's safe file. But there's, oh my God, that man kept everything. We have his school records from 8th grade, for Pete's sake. We had, and it's all together, it's all in scrapbooks and our notebooks. We put them in acid-free paper and.
Do you think it would be helpful to have somebody with library experience, like a retired librarian, that could use?
Well, it'd be all right if a librarian, yeah. But that isn't the only thing, that's part of what I do.
Claudia?
There's a lot more.
If there was a first priority, could you tell us what that is?
I want to say somebody like me, but that's not very nice. I don't know.
But I mean, the, what we're concerned?
The priority is to keep the museum open for the citizens of Wheat Ridge.
Okay.
And to be able to do tours and know the history of Wheat Ridge, and to be able to explain accurately what the Sod House is made of, what the museum is made of, and when it was made, who lived there, and the Johnson's Cabin, and why the logs don't match when you go inside. Different things like that, and that's pretty easy to learn.
Right.
And some of the artifacts that we have, like, we have all kinds of funny little artifacts.
Kristy, Ms. Davis?
Thank you. So, I think, and this is just my thoughts, but I think personally, there's a need, there's two need. I think there's a double need. I think there's coverage for the museums, even if we can get, you know, I mean, right now, we have one day a week, so even if it's three days a week, or four or five days a week is better than the one day a week and the folks, you know, having to be responsible to cover it the entire time. But I also see that there's another need. I will say, last week, I went to Wilmore Davis with my dad, and they had a Wheat Ridge history, and so, they had, they asked my dad and I to come, since we're the Wilmore and Davis of the school. And, and I think that there's definitely a desire for some of the history. And it was interesting, 'cause this was a second grade class. I'm thinking, oh my goodness, are they gonna really care? But they really did care. And they asked great questions, and, you know, I know dad was like, you know, this was a tulip garden right where we're staying, and we grew tulips here, you know? And, and there is a history there, but I think the nice thing is, we have the out, you know, we have the hourly and the actual buildings. But I think in this day and time, there's a lot that we can do electronically with interactive boards. I know, again, just from my background, like, the St. Joseph Hospital Foundation is turning all of their historical 125, 150 years of the sisters coming out here and starting a hospital, and it's all becoming interactive boards. And I'd almost like us to move towards that as well. Get that kind of thing in the rec center, or in a school, or I don't know if we can have a traveling board, or those types of things. But also, as a part of sharing with the kids, we were reading out of a book that was actually published by the Historical Society about, you know, the fourth schoolhouse, and, you know, all those types of things, that I think it would be really neat to put in an interactive board. So, personally, from, from my standpoint, I think, one, we've definitely got the coverage, and to make the actual items that people can see, you know, have that there for people to visit. But then also have it available for folks to either see it on the internet, or see it on our website, or your website, or even, you know, I mean, these interactive boards are awesome, you know? You just click on it if you want to learn about the schools, if you want to learn about, you know, and you can slide through it. So, I personally think that we should look at two, two items in this process, but.
Barbara Davis would be good.
So, so what you're thinking of is some sort of a physical, visual history that people could enjoy, and I couldn't agree with you more, as well as we need some kind of a computerized record system to where we have some of these facts down in computers, I mean, in files, so that it's, people can find it, or that our history is recorded. Is that what I'm hearing?
And it wouldn't be just pertinent to learning the history from 8 to 5, you know, during the week or so.
Right, no. And I think that's what started this whole thing, was a concern, was almost a big blood call, an emergency, because we want to get this recorded. We want to make sure that it goes on and on. And yes, there is a genuine interest in history of many people, and, you know, in our city.
I have over 100 CDs of oral histories that we've taken over the years that are just delightful to listen to.
So, the question is, where do we go from here? Jenny?
We are moving toward that.
I'll go ahead, 'cause I'll come back.
I just have a question. It looks like there was a position for this back in 2002, and it was, looks like it was a part-time position. So, Joyce, this would be run under the Parks and Rec, is that correct? This position?
It was funded under Parks and Recreation. I'm not sure where the accountability was for the position.
Well, that's, was part of my question also, is this a 20-hour-week person? And is this amount that we talked about before, is that appropriate? I mean, it's hard to know.
If you would, I can give you a little background on how we run our part-time pay plan, or how it's set up. So, the first step we would take is, if it were any part-time position in the Parks and Recreation Department or the city, is define the job responsibilities. Then we would go out into the marketplace and try to see if there's a match for that type of job, so that we know what it's supposed to be paid. And then it would get slotted in our part-time pay plan, similar to how we do our full-time employees, and paid the correct amount, there'd be a range, et cetera, based on experience. So, that's where we start. So, it's really hard for me to answer that. That position that was funded in the early 2000s was, I think, not part of that type of data collection. It was a chosen salary, and it was paid to one of the Historical Society members to man the museum.
I guess my question is, the amount that we talked about last week, does, I'm wondering if it's adequate for what is needed for this position? And maybe that's something to be determined later.
Yeah, we would have, like Joyce said, I think we'd have to go through that process, and based on what you decide, and Claudia's recommendation, we would have to go back and look at that, to see if, what that total annual cost would be.
And you know, I may have way too much of a job description. I didn't, you know, I don't have a job description. You just do what needs to be done, and I've grown up with it. I started doing this when I was 39 years old, so.
You've given us a great beginning, you really have. You've really filled out, given us an idea how much there is to do, and that's what we needed. Mr. Tuttulio?
So, Patrick, if somebody is over 20 hours, are they benefited? Or is that, they can apply for part-time benefits, is that how that's set up?
Not every position, though. It's, we classify our positions based on different criteria, some are benefits, some are not. Joyce has most of our part-timers, so maybe she can speak to it.
There's different classifications. They would be, we have intermittent employees that work year-round, but not necessarily a consistent number of hours per week. So, it just depends on the schedule.
Well, see, for example, if, just for grins, if you said $10 an hour and you did a 40-hour-a-week job, that's $20,000 a year. So, I mean, if you cut that in half, you know, it's $10,000 a year. So, I think, you know, five days a week or six days a week might be a little high to start. I was thinking more like part-time, 20 hours a week, you know, again. But I'm supportive of moving forward, staff researching the salary and the job description, then moving it forward and bringing it forth to council later as a budget amendment, sooner than later, because summertime's coming. I know that the high school and some of the other elementary schools would like to go down there, but being only open on one day a week, it's obviously tougher to get down there, and then you have all volunteers. So, for me personally, I would support a part-time position, moving forward with some research by staff to see, you know, what the job description would be, and the hourly wage, and look at internships, you know, where they're maybe getting paid, and they're in college for history or something like that. So, I'm supportive of it. I always have been, so that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Claudia, we are lucky to have you. I feel blessed that we have somebody who's this interested.
Well, then come down and see what we do.
Well, my, my priority for a job description would be more in the line of cataloging. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna live forever, and many of us here aren't. And so, it's important to pass on information in a way that's searchable by future generations. So, my biggest priority would be to get somebody who knows how to catalog this in a way that might also be shareable with the Jefferson County Public Library using the way they catalog things. I also, of course, would love to see it open, but I think the emerg, more hours. But I think the emergency really is the cataloging part.
Further comment? Mr. Starper?
Well, Claudia, I also want to thank you for the work that you do. Obviously, it's, you haven't been billing us for your hours, and we never, we never could afford it, so that's, that's good.
Every once in a while, when I get angry at you, I do.
That's, that's good. As long as you don't tend to. As, as long as you don't tend to rebill, we're okay. But I, I, I think we might, we might be in a position to where we really need to look at two, at two sets of services, and maybe we need two individuals. I think it would really, I don't think it serves our citizens well if we're open only one day a week, because it's tough to get over there one day a week. And, and so I think if we're really gonna benefit our, our citizens with a historical center, and a place to go and be able to research and understand the history of our city, I think we need to be, have the, have the facility open. And then I agree with Mr. Fitzgerald, that I think we need to, to have some kind of staff work that helps to catalog, and particularly to get our records in electronic formats, so we can, so we can manipulate the information, and the, the type of displays, and, and, you know, in the future, the, the paper records will be less and less usable to us, because we'll want them in digital format. So I think maybe as we're thinking about this, and maybe they're not both full-time positions, maybe there, there are two sort of part-time positions, and, and maybe one, you know, has more longevity than another one, or something like that. But I would, I would advocate kind of looking to see what the cost factors would be to put two, two sort of part-time positions together.
Mr. Urban.
Last thing that I would just ask, as we're trying to develop a plan around this, is to understand better what other monies might be leveraged in this process, whether it be through the State Historical Society, or other national archives, there's some, maybe some federal dollars in that arena possibly available. And just to kind of understand that, and being able to bring the weight of the city to an application like that, on behalf of the Historical Society, to be able to leverage those dollars, so that we're getting the most bang out of our buck, and just want to explore that, at least understand that better. I know that the Housing Authority did receive some monies from the Historical Preservation outfit, I'm not sure the exact name of it, but I'd like to at least consider what those other options are, so that when we bring our money to the table, and I think it's worthwhile to support this effort, but if we can do that in concert with other organizations, so that we can bring more value and bring it together at the same time, I think that would be worthwhile.
If you have a grant writer. I do not write, I've written grants, and I've gotten them by golly, but it's not my thing. And I know the Ball House was very, very extensive, and, oh...
You know, the Senior Resource Center...
Ash Joyce.
The Senior Resource Center has a grant writer who has offered to help us. I can't think of her name, I could get it in a minute. But that would be a nice fit for them. Could we ask staff to explore that, or, I think that would be, and I appreciate your suggestion.
George's.
Ms. Davis. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
That's okay, I'm, I was just gonna say, I would agree to, that I would like to move forward with the, looking at two folks. One that would cover the site, and then one that would help archive and start some type of electronic story that we could put on interactive boards, or whatever it might be.
And Mr. Pond.
I don't know that I disagree with all of that. I, I would say that kind of what it's leading me to want to see is a, kind of an operations plan, you know, a longer-term plan, because I think all the things we're talking about are trying, trying to understand how to deal with the short-term immediate needs that are there, but really also looking out over a longer period of time to understand, you know, how we're going to, to really be stewards of that operation, be able to, to put in, to practice, I think, this over a number, number of years, obviously. So as, I think as we go about looking at the part-time positions, what, more closely defining, I think, what the needs are, not just from a job description standpoint, but from, from an operational standpoint, and not just, you know, this year, but five years and ten years from now, I, I'd be interested in understanding that, because I think whatever we do enter into, I think we have to understand what the, the long, the long story looks like, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna handle that.
Yeah, yeah, good point, Mr. Pond. I, you know, in your packet is the current contract that we have between the city and the Historical Society, but you can see it was done in 1987, so maybe this would be an opportunity to, to look at updating that, relate, or contract, and for the future.
Sure, Mr. Tullio.
I guess if there's no other questions, I'll take a stab at a consensus.
Can I say something first? I, I need to let you know that the artifacts in the buildings, except for a few, there's some chairs up at the Ball House now that belong to the Richard Hardistator to the city, but the artifacts in the buildings have all been donated to the Historical Society, except for the Johnson's collection, which the city is, that was a lawsuit, that the city had to take care of those, and we got the job. But other than that, most of the artifacts belong to the Historical Society. So I don't know how you, I don't know how to deal with it. When I'm dead, nobody will know that.
So I guess my consensus would be that, that ask staff to work with the Historical Society on an operations plan, a staffing plan, and a funding plan, and to bring that back to council as soon as you can. So we're looking at operations plan, a funding plan, and a staffing plan, whether it's one or two people, and then to bring that back to council for discussion or approval. That's my consensus.
Do we have anybody who disagrees with that? Or adds to it? Mr. Fitzgerald?
I do not disagree with that, but I still would like some cataloging, or some, some plan for...
As part of that?
Right.
Yeah, I believe that's what we...
Operations plan, staffing plan, and funding plan.
I, I think that's what we heard through discussion.
Are we good then?
Somebody to dig into that library, right?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Do you want to, do you want to date on that, as far as we can bring it back?
I think he's volunteering myself.
And did we have grant writing on that?
Well, that's the funding plan.
Okay, I think we're done, and we're going to be looking back at this in the future with some sort of a plan to get our, our records in order, and to make sure that we retain what our historical presence.
Well, I know you're all enthused about digital, digital stuff, but we belong to Anfram, which is, and to the Jefferson County Historical Commission, and we submitted a CD. I think we submitted an oral CD for the timeframe, and we submitted it on what I thought was the latest CD, and they wanted us to take it back and put it on gold CDs, because CDs will erase themselves after fifty, sixty years. My comment to that was, I won't be here, I don't care. But, 'cause there's other records on it. There are, there's other places that they're in the museum, but...
And we can back them up on hard drives and stuff.
Yeah, but then the hard drive drives crash, you know, it's...
You're not part of it. Thanks, Claudia.
Thank you, Claudia, very much for coming.
Thanks, Claudia.
I've been calling Kristy Barber all this time.
Okay, I think we're ready to move to item number two, which is the Wadsworth Boulevard P E L update.
Thank you, Mayor. As council remembers, we, the city received a, a grant to do a planning and environmental linkage study for our Wadsworth corridor from 35th to 48th. We're about ready to kick off that process, so we have staff here tonight to kind of give you an update on, on what that process is, and also our consultant with Parsons Brinkerhoff is also here, who won the contract to do the, to work for us. Mr. Westburg.
Hey. So, yeah, we're just here to get, to give a project status update. We're gonna do that a couple more times through the process. So want to just revisit what a P E L is. It stands for Planning and Environmental Linkages Study. That doesn't mean much more to me than P E L. So we do have some other descriptions. It's sort of an early version of an environmental assessment. It's a much cheaper, much faster, but an early version of an E A. The findings can be used in the future. They used to have a master planning process that you went through, and then when you started your E A, you started all over again. So what they've done now is they've sort of developed this P E L process, where you get to take all of this stuff forward in the E A, it shortens up the E A process by a little bit. The other thing it does for us, and this is the part that we're kind of excited about, is it enables early action items to be constructed without an E A being in place. So if we identify something along the corridor that could be done early, that it doesn't have such a big impact that it kicks in all the environmental requirements of an E A, we could try to bite that off and do it early. They did that with the Kipling P E L, they've got a couple of early action items they're gonna try and do, that should actually go a long way towards alleviating some of that congestion, certainly not all of it, until they, they rebuild the interchange. But we're hoping to, to find some things that we can do to help our street out. And just as a reminder, this is the Wadsworth corridor, this is from our comp plan, I believe it's from. But these are some of the, the bullet points that were in the previous PowerPoint that we did with you guys, and, you know, just, it's a primary commercial quarter, it's a high priority, it's a Dr. Cog Urban Center, it's on the National Highway System. It's a really important corridor, not just for Wheat Ridge, but really for the region. Wadsworth, the part about a future transit, multimodal opportunities, Wadsworth is the longest north-south street that we've got on the west side of town. So it's been identified as potentially having some rapid transit of some sort or other on it in the future, and we're trying to make sure we don't, we don't stop that. So on January 27th, we awarded the contract to Parsons Brinkerhoff, we just call them P B, by the way, and we'll refer to them as that from now on, 'cause that other thing's a mouthful. And we've got Jason's Longsdorf with us, he's sitting over here on the side, he's the project manager with Parsons Brinkerhoff, and, you know, I know we're kind of early in process, but I've been really excited by the work they're doing so far. They're doing a really bang-up job as a consultant. They're probably the best consultant that, that I've experienced so far working with the city. Don't let that go to your head. On February 18th, just a few weeks later, we had our kickoff meeting, which I think went really, really well. We had almost the entire P B team there, and they've got, they've got several sub consultants that we'll talk about later. On April 3rd, we had our first technical team meeting. Every two weeks, we're having a project team meeting with city staff and the folks from P B that need to be there, certainly not all of them. But every six weeks, we're gonna have a meeting with C dot representatives and F H W A to make sure that we're staying on task, and we're staying on track. And we've gotten a tremendous amount of, of input from them, that's helped us make sure that we're focusing our attentions the way we need to. Yes, yeah, sorry, we, we, that's all we live by where I'm from. On April 21st, of course, we're here, talking with you all about where we are and what we've done so far, the things that we've completed to date. The consultant has started, P B has started the environmental survey work and data collection, and they've got updated traffic counts for, for all the various places. We have a map that shows, that's gonna show where all those things are that we've done that. You may have seen the tubes across Wadsworth a few weeks ago. We've identified some of the technical issues and the needs, sort of the environmental traffic, land use, mobility things that we've got to deal with. And we've started a draft purpose and need statement, and this is a really, really important document in a P E L. This is what sets the tone for the P E L, and this is what really carries things forward. We're gonna show you the purpose tonight, we're gonna show you pieces and parts of the need. We're still working that through the process with C dot and F H W A to get that adopted as the purpose and need for the P E L. We also have to have our open house meeting before we adopt that, 'cause we went, we have to hear from the public on that, too. And then the other thing they've been working on is preparing for the open house. Up until 4:52 this afternoon, they were sending me stuff on it. So the open house is gonna be Wednesday, we certainly invite all of you guys to be there, and also anybody in the public that wants to come. We've done a fairly extensive mailing, I think we had, it was hundreds and hundreds of postcards and letters went out to everyone within about 300 or 400 feet of the, of the corridor to invite them to it. I know I got a postcard at my house. During that open house, it's gonna run for two hours. We're gonna make a presentation, it'll be very similar to the one we're making now, it's just to sort of orient people to what we're there for, and that's gonna be at 5:15, at 5:45, and 6:15. So if you can't be there for the full two hours, and certainly don't want to be there for the full two hours, if you target those times as when to sort of show up, then you can see the presentation, and then, and then have the ability to wander around. The other thing we have for you tonight is the draft presentation, presentation boards. We've, we've sent those off to the C dot and F H W A folks, the federal highway folks, to look at those, to make sure that they're okay with all the information that's being presented on those. And we're just gonna fly through these really fast, even fast by my standards, tonight, 'cause we don't want to go into depth on them, we just want to show you what is gonna be presented at the meeting. And there's also eighteen of them, so I know that would take a long time to go through them in depth. So there's the easy one. This is just a board trying to explain what a P E L is, and it has the example, what's shown in the picture is the handbook that C dot has, 'cause it's a federal process, C dot figured out their way of doing them. And then the, the one on the right is actually the Kipling P E L study that was done, and isn't available on both the C dot website, and I think we may even have a link to it on our website, if you want to, if you want to read through that sometime. But a very similar document. This is the P E L process, it looks really simple and easy. We're, we're up there at the, the very beginning. But this is for folks who really want to understand what it's all about. This is sort of the study background. What, what is Wadsworth corridor, what the P E L's gonna do for them? And the area that's outlined in blue there is the boundary for the environmental analysis. So that's all the places we looked at environmentally for this, for all the, you'll see the slide of all the things that they've, they've looked at for the environmental stuff. This is the project team, up at the top is F H W A, next is C dot, and in the city of Wheat Ridge, we've actually got six people in our staff involved in this, Scott and Steve and I, and Steve's here, too, tonight. And then also, two of our, our planners are involved, both Ken Johnstone, who's the director of the department, and then also Lauren Mikulak, who's one of our planners. You guys see her all the time. We also got Steve Art involved, because this, whatever project happens, it's gonna have an impact on the businesses, and we want to make sure that, that Steve's involved from an economic standpoint, and he's provided a lot of good stuff. And then the bottom piece there, the consultant team, we've got H D R, and I've worked with some of those folks on the Gold Line project, they were one of the, the consultants on the Gold Line project. And then Arlen Land Consulting, R M C, who are the folks that are helping us with the environmental cleanup, they're also helping us here on geotechnical things and environmental things, and I can't read that second one. Tool, thanks. Tool, who is a bicycle pedestrian expert in the metro area, and they're, they're providing a lot of insight for us on those things. So this is, this is just a board that shows the recent planning history that is either associated with Wadsworth, or is around Wadsworth. So this is just to give the, the audience a chance to look at all the things that have already been done for Wadsworth, and see that it's not, this isn't the first thing we're doing. This is just another step in the process of trying to accomplish a better Wadsworth. This is the purpose, and I'm gonna pause there for a sec, so you guys can read this, but this is the purpose that, that city staff and the consultant team has proposed so far. The representatives from, from C dot and F H W A have also chimed in on this, and helped us refine this. So everybody's kind of looking around us, I assume you're done reading. So that's what we've got as our purpose right now. Certainly, if you have comments on that, we'd love to hear those. We'll have this PowerPoint loaded up on our website, we've got a website portion just for the Wadsworth P E L, and so if you want to go back and look at this purpose or any other stuff that we've got up here, you can certainly do that at your leisure. And then if you have any comments on the purpose, you can let us know if you have those. We feel pretty good about it so far. And then these are the various needs. Our first need is the incompatibility between function and vision. This is just highlighting the fact that we've got a street that's mostly built for cars, it doesn't do that very well, and it doesn't do all the other things that we'd like it to do well. This slide talks about the lack of adequate vehicular capacity, we could have taken this picture any day of the week at almost any time of day. This is just a real quick thing, we often talk in traffic circles about level of service, in particular with intersections, and this is just to give everybody an idea of what a level of service looks like in the real world. We're, we're in the EF range right now, just for the record. Another need is our lack of access management. We have a lot of driveways, we have some driveways that are really wide, and what that does is, it, it really hurts the progression of traffic on the corridor with people pulling into the corridor, or pulling off the corridor. It also sets up a lot of conflict points for pedestrians and bicycles that might be on the sidewalk, or whatever facility is available. The lack of multimodal access, those are some really good examples of the sidewalks, or lack thereof, that we have along the corridor. So this just talks about that with the bus stops related in there also. The need for ongoing safety, there's a picture of a guy walking across the street, in the middle of the street. I asked the consultant how long they waited to do that, he actually said that we picked the best of many pictures we had of people doing that. And I see that every day, 'cause I commute Waz every day, I see people walking around, walking across the street, random locations. This is a board we're gonna put up with a bunch of sticky notes and pens in front of, for people to write any of the things they come up with, they can stick them on the board, and then we can look at those later and try to digest those down, and see if, if there's a need that the public thinks about that we haven't thought about as, as design professionals. This is just a real quick graphic showing the study's schedule, the various open houses we'll have, and also the council meetings. the various open houses we'll have, and also the council meetings, and then the various project team meetings and things, just to give people a feel for what our schedule's going to be. It's a 15-month process. We expect to finish in May of next year. This is just a quick slide on the transportation analysis. And again, this is going to be on a nice 24 by 36 so you can walk up to it and look at it. But it shows all the traffic signals that we've done, turning movement counts at. Also shows the locations for the counts and things. They did a really good job of trying to cover the entire corridor. This is some graphics from our bicycle pedestrian master plan, trying to show where we are today, where the destinations are, and what we think we want in the future. These are the environmental issues that have been identified so far. And we actually have four properties that are considered, that will probably be considered historic along the corridor. We have those four locations shown. We also have the parks shown because those are important to folks during the environmental analysis. But those are all the different things that we're going to be looking at as a part of this study and trying to address and hopefully make better or not impact too severely. Our next steps is the team's going to develop alternatives. Once we have the first open house, we'll finalize the purpose and need, and then we'll start working on the various alternatives. We'll come back to city council and the public that first week of October to, again, sort of brief you guys on what we're going to show the public on Wednesday night, the following Wednesday night, to show where we are on all the various alternatives and get input from the various folks. We'll finalize the alternatives, and then we'll come back to city council and the public again in February to show what those final alternatives are and those few things that we've narrowed it down to. And then we'll finalize the PEL and come back to city council on May 11th, hopefully. That's our target, to get approval of the, to adopt the PEL. Now, certainly if we at any point during the process think we need to come back to the city council during study session and brief you on something or get some more input, we'll certainly add that meeting in there. If at some point you guys think we need to come back and see you, we can certainly do that also. But these are the ones that we are definitely scheduled to do with city council and the public. We just want to be as open with this process as we can and make sure that people hear what's coming. So now we'll open it for questions, if anybody has any. And we can certainly go back and look at other slides if we need to and those kinds of things.
Thank you, Mark. That was fast and informative. We have questions all over the place. Mr. Pond.
I'm thinking back to some of the work that CDOT may have done on Kipling. And I'm just wondering, when you go through that first round of alternatives, how many are you usually generating? Because I know that there's a pretty, it sounds like a broad number, and then you ratchet down and...
Yeah. Part of the process is they want you to try to explore almost everything that might be possible. And so we'll sort of look at that. And some of those, we may spend five minutes looking at and then discarding immediately because this is absolutely not going to work. You know, we've sort of talked about how many alternatives we're going to do. And from what we hear from the CDOT and the FHWA folks is that we don't really set a number on it. You look at as many as you can, and if somebody thinks of one, we'll throw that in the mix also. And so, you know, I know on the Kipling thing, they had like 35 or some number of alternatives like that. And we may very well end up, it's a little, with a corridor, it's a little more defined than what you do. So we may not have quite as many, but we're definitely going to try to be as exhaustive as we can. We want to eliminate the ones that just absolutely won't work and really have several that we take forward into that second round of cuts.
And then, again, just reflecting on Kipling, I think they got it down to four. And then do you have to be to one?
No, with the PEL process, you typically don't land at one. With an EA, you generally land at one. You may have two, but you generally land at one. Since the PEL's more of a conceptual design, we may go forward with two to four alternatives. I'd like to get it down as much as we can because we want to start doing some of those early action items. But often the early action items are common between a couple of different alternatives. And that's why they sort of shake out of the mix and you go ahead and jump on those and do them.
And you're right, George. Kipling is narrowed down to four, but two of them are the preferred. So those would be looked at first, I think.
They tried to do two. They were told they will take four forward.
Mr. Stocker.
Thank you, Mark. Nice presentation and an interesting project. Will the PEL address or analyze sort of economic or potential economic benefits that, in development opportunities that may happen as a result of what happens on the street?
It will somewhat. This is, you know, it's a transportation planning project, but one of the things we've added to PB's scope is to analyze impacted sales tax and how that may affect things and different things. And certainly, we're not going to, you know, we're trying to be really careful about what we do that impacts the existing businesses, but also trying to promote new business and redevelopment that's in line with our mixed-use vision and the things that are in vision Wheat Ridge and in the mixed-use zoning and stuff like that. So, you know, we're looking at possible densification along the corridor and that kind of thing. And we're trying to figure out where do we draw that line in the sand on where things go. But definitely the economic impact, we've asked PB to include that as a part of their analysis because we're really concerned about this. This is one of our big sales tax generators. And yes, it is a transportation quarter, but it's also really important for us.
One more follow-up. The geographical boundaries of the corridor are sort of the properties that abut the corridor. And then do they go to the outside boundaries of those properties?
Yeah. So the maps that we have that we showed several times, the sort of the environmental analysis, typically it's the very adjacent property and maybe the next two in, unless it's a really big property like where the Safeway is. We just went one property in because that takes it back pretty far. But like on the, some of the smaller properties, we generally did the adjacent plus the next two properties in, kind of a thing, just because we're trying to cover everything.
Ms. Langman.
So it's what, first of all, I have kind of two questions. But on the first public meeting, you had only kind of one little like question board. Are you going to have more than that? Are you really going to try to, are you mostly just giving them the first view of it and then ask for some suggestions? And then at a future one, you start drilling down into...
Yeah. So the focus right now of this meeting is, number one, to introduce the project, but also is to nail down that purpose and need. So we'll have that purpose board, and we'll certainly take opinions on that. The sort of additional need board, we may have two of those set up. We talked about having two. The other thing we're going to do is sort of in the, because we're going to use both of these rooms for this meeting. The other thing we'll do is we'll have a table set up in the middle that's going to have the corridor all plotted out on one big, long strip. And people can just bring notes. It will have sticky notes around it also. And they can just write things like, "This is my business. Don't mess with my driveway," or "Parking," or whatever it is, and stick that on there. So that's another way of getting feedback. We did that on the Pierce Bike Lanes project. It worked really, really well for us. But we'll have a couple of places. And certainly, PB's going to have several people stationed, like two people at every board that's there so they can talk with people and take notes as what they say. And we expect to get a lot of comments and a lot of data out of this, out of this meeting.
And then, and whatever overall plan you get, it connects, because right now, Arvada and Lakewood have already completed this and did the build-out. So we're kind of the funnel. I mean, we're the little narrow funnel that, you know, people go through from Lakewood and gets all mucked up over there by, you know, south of 38th. And then it starts breaking up a little bit, then it mucks up again as you get into Arvada.
Yeah. So one of the things, our southern limit, we actually brought the southern limit a little farther south to 35th, which is sort of that, right at the bottom of the hill, if you will. Because everything south of that, at least, you know, from what's on the land use side is very different from north of there. And so that was a real logical southern boundary. One of our first meetings was, we spent a lot of time talking about boundary. On the northern boundary, we were going to try to extend it as far north as we could. The original study was just to 46th. We've got it up to 48th now. We were heavily advised not to touch the ramps for I-70 because then you open up a whole nother can of worms because now you've touched the interchange and it may, yeah, we don't want to touch that. So we're going to start short. Now, the PEL will likely say that the PEL study stops here. Further improvement north would be to add another lane, connect this ramp different, do that. It may mention those things, but we're not going to study those things as a part of this project.
And then, I'm sorry.
No, you're doing fine.
So you stop at south at 35th, but Lakewood made their fix up to 26th?
It's not quite 26. I know at 26, we're still at just four lanes.
Okay. So it's...
So as we look at the traffic along the corridor, there is a lot of commuting through the corridor, but what really locks things up is that intersection of 38th and 44th. And so that's what creates a lot, because we have two major east-west roads that intersect our north-south road. And so that's why those areas really get locked up. We think if we get more capacity at those two intersections and the part in between, that will likely fix a lot that's coming to the south. Now, certainly the part to the south needs to be done, too. And that'll be on a list for another council at another date to do in 10 or 15 or 20 years or whatever it is. But, you know, this is our first step at the most congested part of that, of that four-lane corridor that's left behind.
And so it's not a complete fix. It's really just the easiest relief. It's like a pressure reliever, not a complete system.
It's a manageable project.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Urban.
If we could go back to the board that dealt with the purpose. I guess one thing, as this, my understanding that the public meeting in part is to help draft this purpose, that it may be beneficial to title this as a draft purpose or some way to encourage thoughts about that it isn't just, this is what it is. You know, please add your ideas to what this purpose may be so that it invokes that type of interaction.
That's a great idea. We all still call it the draft purpose and need. And we need to maybe communicate that better with the public, that we're seeking their input on these particular slides. And when I do the presentation, we'll do a very similar thing. I'm going to say, "And that's over in that part of the room. We're over in that part of the room," and that kind of a thing. So, yeah, we can definitely get them focused in on that. But, yeah, I think it's a great idea to say draft purpose on that.
Or something, then maybe an invoking question or something that says, "Does this work for you?" Or "Is this the purpose you want?" Or "Is there anything you would like to add?" Or something that would invoke people to think about how they might redefine that or change that, if that's the part of the intent of the public meeting.
Sure. We can certainly do that.
And then, as it relates to the public meeting, the outreach process for that, was it to residents and business owners as well as the, let's say, the landlords of those businesses as well? Or how is that process set up?
All of the above. So what we did is we mailed to all property owners, and then we also mailed to tenants also. If the property owner was not that physical address, you know, so you do that sort really quickly and easily, we also mailed to that tenant. And I think we also went down and got business license information from the sales tax folks and used that also to populate that list. It was a big mailing. We let the consultant do that. I think we did 300 feet on either side, captured any property that touched that 300-foot line. I know that I'm a little farther west than that. Maybe I think they included me to make sure they knew the mailing went out because then I'd come say, "Hey, I got my card." So we've also got it posted on the website as an announcement for Wednesday night. We've been trying to, you know, just promote this as much as we can. I've been telling people about it when I get a chance. And we're actually going to videotape. We're going to have Jesse down there on Wednesday to videotape at least the three presentations. They'll be very similar, but I change things sometimes. And we may run that as part of a top-of-the-hour or some of the kind of video thing that we run after the open house to try to keep this up in people's minds as they dial in on Channel 8 and stuff. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, in the opening letter in our packet, it states that the results of these efforts may ultimately be used to prepare National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, studies, and final design. So my question is, is this therefore is not the final design? There's something else beyond this?
Yeah. This is kind of a step one. The PEL is sort of the first step you take. You can go directly to EA if you want to.
Okay. This is what we're talking about.
Right. And we actually, I know that when I started in '07, we had been granted, we had gotten a grant from Dr. Cog to do an EA for Wads. And then we couldn't fund at the time, so we had to drop that grant. And the difficulty with EA is they don't really always identify early action times. You sort of go for the full-blown thing, and then you've got to figure out how to do pieces, parts. So with the PEL, you sort of do a conceptual level design, kind of like what we're doing on 30th Avenue right now, a conceptual level design that tries to answer all the questions and flesh out all the snakes and those kinds of things. So then we know where we go from here, and it sort of narrows that alternative. So the EA process, instead of being maybe five to seven years, is three to five years. And so it helps to shorten up the EA process, but gets you started on that EA process. So step one. An optional step one, but a really good step one for us, we think.
Thank you. Any more questions? I guess not. Thank you. And I hope some of us can attend on Wednesday. Sounds interesting. Thank you, Mark. And thank you for coming. Okay. Item number three is the discussion of revised council rules. Mr. Dowell.
Counsel, these are in your packet. You came up with a previous council meeting. And you have a red line, I think, plus a short cover memo of the council rules. I won't repeat the discussion we had at the study session that resulted in these changes. But what you have is a red line version that shows what I'll call substantive changes rather than changes where I moved locations of things. I did a fair amount of reorganization. I created a numbering system. None of that, or at least most of those changes, I didn't bother to show in red line because I wanted you to be able, as much as possible, to focus on the actual substantive changes. So, for example, the table of contents has a list of page numbers, but those will change when we finalize it. Page numbers in a red line are always kind of arbitrary anyhow. There are just a few things I think that I'd probably want to draw your attention to. And then I'd be interested in any comments, reactions you have. I'll make good notes here. It would be my expectation, unless what we have here really needs a lot of changing, that you direct me to make any additional changes that you'd actually discuss here tonight. And that would check the box as the first meeting of the two meetings, you know, under the system for mending the rules. And then it could just be scheduled for the next regular council meeting for action. Let me point out a couple of things, just in no particular order, but going through the thing from the top. On page three, you'll notice under mayor pro tem, I've, and this is a change I've made throughout, the business meeting is struck in regular meetings. And sort of that's because the, there's really no, there's no location for a business meeting. We have been referring to regular meetings of the council as business meetings, but really, they're regular meetings. You meet in a regular meeting, study session, regular meeting, special meeting, and adjourned meetings. Those are your meetings. And then there's study sessions like tonight. And I made that clear. And you'll see that throughout. And I just want to let you know that's what I'm up to there. On the next page, looking at paragraph three toward the bottom, page four, this is the business about putting, and there are a couple of places where this comes up, where items can be placed on the agenda. And in this particular case, it comes up under the mayor pro tem's duties, which is to review, is to set up the agenda. Mayor pro tem can remove items except for items that have been put on by two council members or that were added during the meeting. And then I'll get later to the rule that actually says that, too. But this kind of, it comes up in a couple of places. And I realize that adding and deleting items from the agenda are, you know, important issues to the council. They took a fair amount of the discussion when we met before. And I wanted to make sure you knew where those changes are. On the next page, you have the duties of the parliamentarian in rules of order. That's new rule E. Just a couple of points here. Number three, paragraph number three was largely the paragraph that I think it was council members Fitzgerald and Urban that had, one of the other of them came up with an amendment. And whoever it was, I forgot which, but the other person made some changes to it. That's where that landed. I did provide, you'll notice in number five, the mayor, the mayor pro tem of presiding as the final authority. But you had directed that can be overridden by three-quarter vote of the entire council, and I've done that. I added, without asking you, number one, that the parliamentarian can call on the city attorney for a recommendation if desired, not because I'm trying to make work for myself, but because that happens occasionally. And unless you want it to stop happening, I thought I'd have a place for it. So I put it there. I'm not hitting every paragraph. I just want to give you some highlights. Only a couple more minutes here. One change that I do need made on page six that I didn't catch, bottom of the page, under executive sessions, council can meet in executive session, vote the majority of the council, in a regular, we should add, or special, meeting because occasionally we call a special meeting for the sole purpose of having an executive session. And under the open meetings law, you can do that. And the rules really ought to reflect that. Just for your information, attendance of meetings, informal meetings, is on page seven. This is not a location where you directed some changes, but it's a good opportunity for me to just kind of remind us of the requirements of corridor open meetings laws applies to various configurations of council members. Obviously, when you're all here, that's a public meeting, and it's been given advance notice. As you go down on the food chain, however, five members of the council, yes, that's a quorum. They can meet, but it's still a quorum, where you have a quorum or there's potential for action, which in this case means... which in this case means a quorum, means five council members, you have to have advance notice. Pardon me. When you drop down to number two, three or four members of the council can attend meetings. Those meetings are open, but no notice is required. So, when you're at three or four, that's open, but no notice. When you get to five, advance notice. Obviously, below three, two or more council members, no notice required. I specifically provided whether or not the mayor also attends because that's come up over the years. And the mayor is not a member of the council for that purpose. The mayor's, you know, the mayor obviously presides the council meetings, but is not a member of the council for these counting purposes. And I've always given that opinion, but this gave me the chance to write it down and kind of eliminate sometimes the problem that we've had in me explaining it. So, let's see. Informal meetings, meetings of other groups, that's always fine. But the same rules apply. If you're going to someone, if you're going to a Dr. Cog meeting and there's three of you there, that's an open meeting for, but no notices, no advance notices required. And then there's my favorite, which is number three on the top, page eight. Social gatherings at which the discussion of public business is not the central purpose. And that is right out of the open meetings law and that's always allowed. Now, on right of the floor, I just wanna draw your attention to paragraph number four on the bottom of page eight. That language, as it goes over to page nine, I think, was put together by Councilmember Fitzgerald. And that's, you know, it's got a fair amount of detail in it, but I wanted you to know that that's where that came from and we discussed it and it came in. But to some extent, that'll change a little bit the dynamics on the dais. And some, you know, some work will need to be done just to keep track of those time periods. Order of business in the agenda on page 10. Preparation initiation of agenda items. And here, I've done some reorganization. So you have the order of business and then how do agenda items get prepared? This is really preparation is letter C. Letter D is initiating and adding agenda items. That's on the next page, 11. And that got probably a third of the time that was spent in your meeting last time was spent on this. And you'll notice almost all of it's new and that represents the conversation that you have. Probably the base rule is in D1, which is that each council member and the mayor can originate two items per month. They can be added to the agenda of a regular meeting or a study session. In terms of scheduling, subject to the scheduling authority of the mayor pro tem, it's the intention of the rule, no more than two agenda items initiated by the mayor or any council member under this rule during any single month, two per month was the rule. The, and then that council member has to provide the information. It's also true, however, that the council during a regular meeting, turning over to page 12, paragraph five, can add items. And they can be added to a future agenda item, either study session or regular meeting. Bottom page 11, sorry to make you turn back. You know, when does a matter get reconsidered? Once it's been decided at a given meeting. And I have provided that, as I think I understand, that once it's been decided by a formal council voter, regular, special adjourned meeting, or by a consensus at a study session, it's not available for, to be added to another agenda for six months. And that's a revision of the rule that you presently have. That takes us through pretty much the things I wanted to mention to you. The rest of them are, you know, sort of further down on the food chain. But I wanted to draw your attention to the key things that were the major sources of discussion. And thus ends my presentation. Happy to answer questions. We can work through it in any way you like.
Mr. Dowell, the one thing that's come up over the years, and I still think that there's some point where if two council members add something to the agenda, I, at what point, it's the question for Patrick. I think that, like, for example, we had put this on the agenda and we had to call Claudia for Claudia to come to the meeting tonight and email her. At what point can we have the city manager assist us in getting the backup material? Or I had to call John Zabau to come to the council meeting for the senior resource center. So, I mean, I think that the city manager's office, within reason, should be able to assist in helping get the backup material. Now, if it's gonna be days and days and days worth of work, I get that. But at what point, so I'm kind of pointing this out to you or to the city manager, about where do you draw the line, say, you know, if it's a 10-minute phone call, you'll do it. Or if it's a three-hour research, we should do it. What do you think? Or what do you recommend?
This was a council rule that was added by a previous council, so, I mean.
No, no, but I mean, in practice, what do you think? I mean, should we keep it?
Yeah, we're always here to assist and we always have with items. It's just, a lot of times, if it just comes from two council members without much discussion at a study session, I don't know what the intent of that item is. So, we need at least some background from those two people to direct me to provide the right information. Because, you know, it could be a very large subject and without some direction and more discussion, I'm not sure what to prepare. So, as long as we know what to prepare and understand what the issue is, it's not a problem. But most, a lot of the times, we don't understand what the discussion, what you want the discussion to be about. So, we need, at least need some language or intent or background to help us put together something for the back.
From the two council members?
Yeah.
The only rule that we have right now around that's analogous is the rule that says, city attorney doesn't write ordinances unless directed by, you know, majority vote of the council at a regular meeting. And there's no question what the purpose of that is. You don't want to spend money putting together an ordinance that bluntly doesn't have enough support to, that won't go anywhere on first reading. And that's not immediately analogous, but that's an expression of sort of a policy choice about where you spend time and money. And you can make a different policy choice around agenda items here, or the same policy choice or some revision.
I'm okay with the city attorney not writing an ordinance. I guess what I'm looking for is some suggestions from Patrick on two council members add something to the agenda. At what point, if you're just looking for like a memo or an email or something from the two council members saying this is what we're looking for, then you can make a judgment call and say, well, that's too much work. I can't do it without more direction. Or if it's gonna be a five-minute phone call, I can do that. Is that, that's what I'm looking at. Is that a happy balance or a fair balance?
It's kind of been the practice, I believe, at least since my tenure in this position. You know, I think the examples of you gave with the senior resource centers, because you had sent an email, I think, to Janice asking her to contact, which is fine.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think staff was assisting with those issues.
Ms. Davis.
And I would just say, as a city council person, if I am putting something on the agenda, most of the time, I'm in contact with those folks. So, I also wouldn't mind calling because it's probably, you know, I've been working with them to say, hey, yeah, you made this request. Looks like you're gonna be on the agenda on, you know, whatever date. So, I mean, I could see it either way because I'm sure in most of those circumstances, you're already in contact with those folks anyways. So, it would just be a follow-up.
Are you saying you would contact the two council members that added something and you would ask them to get the backup? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying, if I was the council person that asked for the agenda item, you know, I'd provide the information and like I would call Claudia to say, Claudia, we got you on the schedule for this date. I mean, I could see myself as a council person doing that just because I've been working with them to get on the agenda.
Well, I get that and I understand. I'm just saying, is there a happy balance? Where there's some information that staff has that we can get from the city manager quickly, I'd like to be able to have that access without taking up a lot of time. That's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and I think my other, just in addition to that, and I'll be quiet. But I think the other thing is, is I think there would have, there were some other things, like with the senior resource center, that like personally, I would have liked additional information. So, I don't know, again, if we know that that's coming up on the agenda. As other fellow council folks, you know, do we in advance say, hey, I know these folks are coming. They're gonna be requesting funds. Can we ask these, ask them to provide us information on these six items?
That's kind of where I'm getting, where does that fall? I mean, you know, so anyway.
Mr. Pond.
I've come on that, but first I have a question on it because I actually was trying earlier to reconcile that statement, I think, which is D2 with C8, which...
Just above on the same page?
Oh, well, hold on.
On page 11, right?
Page 11, Roman numeral four, which is on page nine, but I'm on page 11. C8, I mean, basically, every agenda item, this is technically giving the city manager responsibility for every agenda item being placed on the agenda. Am I missing something?
C8 on page 11?
Am I missing something?
I see what you're saying.
So, that's one thing. I'm just, obviously, that I'm not sure if these are conflicting with each other or not. But regardless, maybe someone can answer that later. But I agree with Christie, I think. But I wanna talk about the two sides of it. I think it is important to be careful not to have two council members, obviously unintentionally running up the time of staff perhaps. And I'm not saying that that would be the intention, but I think that staff does need to have the discretion to kind of say, listen, that's probably too much time and we need to maybe discuss that in a different way. At the same token, I think there are times where it comes up to discussion and it becomes not effective at the meeting because we don't have enough information to actually make a decision. And so, I do think somehow perhaps there's some balance to be found there. I think I've felt that way a couple of times in the last, in the last couple of months. But I'm torn because I don't, you know, I wanna be careful with staff time. So, I don't know, I don't even, I don't know how to write that into a rule. I'm just saying that I think it's important to figure that out.
Just to kind of check the box on what the fiscal notes, paragraph eight, I think they're separate. I think they are independent. I read paragraph eight to be, look, once something's been, you know, put on the agenda, or once it's gonna be on the agenda, city manager's obligation to tell the council how much it would cost. Because it's all about the money. And not really to elaborate on the policy and good, bad, here's, that, I think, if you're gonna find it at all, you find it in D2. And right now, it's laid as the responsibility.
Well, the reason, that's fair. I think that's right. Intentionally, it's supposed to be separate, although practically, I'm not sure that it ends up being perfectly separated because the reality is, is that it requires the two council people to be able to provide clear understanding to the manager to be able to estimate costs. I mean, so, I don't know.
Yeah, you're right. Manager can't do an estimate unless he or she has sort of the raw material to work with.
And that's kind of the take, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good job, Mr. Dowell.
Thank you.
I have a number of things. Some of them are just
I'm shocked.
gonna be sort of pagination and punctuation.
Sure.
I'll try not to dwell on.
No, the more eyeballs on this, the better.
But I had a couple of things and I'm going to go through sort of in chronological order, if you'll bear with me. On page four, item three, and it's probably two, three, where we talk about the mayor pro tem's duties include reviewing and setting agenda. We talk about determination of emergency items at the council meetings, but we don't necessarily talk about what are emergency items. And I'm not necessarily asking for a determination on all of these things at this, but rather more to point them out.
It's interesting, it's never come up.
On the next page, on page five, on F3, and maybe it happens on other things. Sometimes Robert's Rules of Order rules is capitalized, sometimes it's not. And I would just ask that you sort of go through for consistency and decide where you wanna do that. On page six, on the next page.
Yep.
We're talking about meetings. I was surprised that we didn't have a section that said regular meetings and one that said special meetings.
That's because as much as we have is 3A, that's types of meetings, and 3A1, just, I mean, it's all in 3A.
Okay, it's all in 3A.
Yeah.
Does that also refer, 3A1, would that refer to executive sessions also?
An executive session's really not a meeting. It's a session that you can only conduct within a meeting. So, I haven't listed it.
In the edit thing, you use PM in different configurations, capital PM, P period M, small and whatever, small deals.
I'll pick a format and stick to it.
Whatever you, whatever you like. Can the council go into executive session from a special meeting?
Yes, and especially if we do the change I suggested at the bottom of page six.
It would seem to me that under 3D1, you would want to say in a regular or special meeting.
Yes, yes, that's the change I intend to make.
Okay, good. On the next page, on 7D1, I don't think you need the one there.
Sorry.
Oh, I see, gotcha.
Got it, thank you. Good eye.
Somewhere I kind of, and I guess when I was reading this and going over it, it seemed to me, I wanted to call this the notice rule or something like that. And I didn't know, are each one of these a rule or taken as a whole, are they the rules? But it seems like that we have, you're talking about rule 3E.
3E or E3 or?
Well, down on four, on 3E.
Oh, rule, Roman numeral 3E.
A meeting described in this rule 3E.
Right. Because that's the number of this particular rule. This is rule, Roman numeral 3 sub E, is the whole rule.
Let's move on.
Oh, I think maybe I see what you're.
I mean, I thought, you know, this sort of notice, the notice rule is kind of what I named it because it was sort of having, you know, it talked about the number of hours before you could notice.
Right, right.
It's different than these other things that we've been talking about. It's a more distinct.
Sure. I see what you're saying. And actually, it talks more about notices than it, sort of, here's the notice you need for this kind of meeting, this kind of meeting, this kind of meeting. And that's all good. I think you still do wanna have paragraph number four say something like that because what it's trying to communicate is, no matter which one of these informal meetings you're in, you don't take any actions.
Yeah, and in number four, my note to that was tied together with the notice rule. Or bring a little tighter connection to that.
Okay, I follow that.
On the absences, one, on page eight, G, absences. It was my, it was my understanding that if you were not going to be at a meeting, you needed to inform the clerk that you would not be at the meeting. Not necessarily why you wouldn't be there.
Let me, that may have just been a, this shows is all new, but I think this one just got moved. I don't care on this one. I tend to agree with you. Most meetings I go to, and I go to a lot of city and town council meetings, the clerk will say, I got a call from council member X and he's unable to be here tonight, period. And I think that that's honestly fine and fair and you shouldn't have to.
Why would strike the word why and put in that? And that, the council member will be absent or something like that, so that's.
I'll do that.
On item. On, on item F, which, or H, which is the right of the floor and number one, I had a note, the presiding officer must first recognize each council member requesting to speak on an agenda item. Is it necessarily on an agenda item or would it, would it be something that may not be on the agenda?
I, I think it's true. I think the presiding officer always recognizes people to speak. I don't think you get to just weigh in, so I think that's true.
Only on an agenda item or is it, uh, recognize the person to speak?
Yeah, I, I think on, from just a pure procedural standpoint, I think it's, it's all the time. It shouldn't be limited to on an agenda item and that's, has been the practice always.
Then you might strike those words.
We can strike on an agenda item.
On number four, down at the bottom, uh, following introductions of an agenda item and a motion, comma, properly seconded? Or does the, does the, a, a motion, does that, and this is more of a question for me, does that include the second?
Yeah, if you don't have a, I, I think it does include the second, but I'm, I'm glad you actually raised this because, um, most of the time, council waits to get a motion in and a second and then we have discussion. But sometimes that doesn't work well if you need to hear from staff first to get some kind of report first. And I think in the past, we've actually had that happen too, where we've needed to have a, some kind of staff report before you can have a motion. This comes up sometimes when there's various alternative motions. It, it might be time to make, to change that rule and have the staff report before the motion is made. And I'm just, I'm glad you raise it because this has been on my mind. I think it came up at the last meeting, if I recall.
It does, and if anything, I think we need that flexibility in there.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts anything at all. And, and I, I know it's important. I do believe, and there, I've gone to, I've go to way too many meetings where there's no motion made and there's this long, desultory discussion and at the end of which nothing ever happens. And this is not here, but I was in a council meeting and a jurisdiction won't identify about a week ago and it just drove me nuts and I couldn't do anything about it. And this rule really helps because it so focuses on, here's what we're, here's what this is all about and we're going to either say yes or no or maybe to this. But, um, before you can even, I think, mount a motion, uh, most of the, what, seventy-five percent of the time, you sort of know what the motion's going to be and fine, but a good twenty-five percent of the time, you don't. And I don't think it would hurt at all to change the order so that there's a staffer or, you know, staff, staff presentation, recommendation, and then the motion. But per your original question, uh, unless you, unless you have a second, you don't have a motion, really. So, I think that we can live without mentioning the second, but I, I do agree that if, if you do, that we can move into, move it, have the staff presentation first. Okay.
Why would you want to change the rule for twenty-five percent of the time? I don't, I think it should be either or.
Because, well, let me tell you why. I think that for that twenty-five percent of the time, the discussion isn't as, isn't nearly as well informed. And for the seventy-five percent of the time, having a report first does absolutely no harm to the later, uh, council member making a motion. It just doesn't do any harm.
Well, and I, a- actually, maybe kind of found it out because I think at some other of our city meetings, like the planning session, it's, I, it's quite typical to have a rather extensive staff report as part of the, you know, as part of the whole discussion prior to a motion. And oftentimes, the motion and the, uh, and the, um, uh, conditions of the motion will, will, will change and evolve due to the, to the staff reports. I, it doesn't, I mean, to me, I can see it both ways, but I certainly don't, wouldn't want to be restricted, um, to, to not have it before.
So, which, right now, under decisions, resolutions, and motions, it's always a motion and a second, then discussions. You're saying to flip that now for every decision, resolution, and motion?
No, not, not all. The only thing that I think you need before the motion is the staff report, comma, if any. Not discussion, I, you know, council discussion, I think, always happens after the motion. By definition, you, I would not want that, you know, I don't, I, I absolutely get it that you don't have. That's what happened at this meeting. It was that. They had this conversation that ranged far and wide and really had no focus. And had they had a motion, it would have had a focus.
You're proposing staff discussion if needed.
No, just staff, staff, uh, report and recommendation if any.
And, and so I see where, where Jerry's going with this. Is, uh, questions to staff considered discussion? Because that, because that, I think that's natural if staff starts talking to you.
Yes, you're changing the whole flow of this, so that, staff makes a presentation, then there's questions, and then you want a motion after all that, so I, I think that...
No, I, I would suggest, and I understand your concern, but I hope you can...
You're making the meetings longer.
But I hope you can understand mine, which is that there have been times where the, the, you're just not able to make a motion until you've, I would suggest you have s- staff presentation, comma, if any, but there not be questions of staff, that that happen after the motion. Because you're right, the minute you get into questions of staff, then you're into discussion and you should be. That's the give and take territory where things, you know, get examined and that absolutely should happen after a motion.
So, what happens if staff says there's no report? Then you go right to the motion?
Then you go right to the motion. That's why I think you say s- staff report if any.
And then no question, questions after the motion. Okay, I can live with that personally.
And what I, I guess I'd like to suggest is we try that. You know, if, if council agrees, we try that and just kind of see how it works in practice because it, there have been times when we've, having a, trying to make a motion happen early hasn't helped.
I just know that when somebody introduces something, they read the executive summary and the title. And so, that is kind of like a staff report at the beginning. And so, if staff wants to add to it, they're going to add and then you make a motion.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's...
Does that make sense?
And we'll have to try it out a little bit. I'm not trying to pull anything here. It's just that I, I've seen some real, uh, some confusion on...
I think our goal here is always to make it clear as possible for citizens who are listening and, and I, you know, and that good decisions are made, you know, regardless whether it takes a little bit more or a little less time, doesn't matter.
Well, my point is we don't want to get off base and start talking about something that doesn't...
I don't think so.
I absolutely agree. And, and I think you make a good point about questions of staff, et cetera. You need to have the report and then get the motion in. And then it's, then the matters on the table for, and then it matters really in the council's control once you have a motion. All right?
If I could continue.
Sure.
Under the, uh, on page nine, under, uh, is it probably I, elected officials matters? I had a question that are, are motions in order during that period? And that was really a question I...
Unless it's, uh, approving, let's, there's a, I think there's a, pardon? Yeah, that's right. Yeah, there's something in the charter. You can't spend money, but, but it's, motions are actions.
Otherwise, it's fair game.
Yep, sure, yep. And that's happened and fine. I think, I think you're controlled by the charter there. It's, council member Tulia is right, it's spending money.
Good. Under, under four, order of business, B, order of business, the general rule. As to the order of business in regular council, regular business meetings or regular meetings.
Just regular meetings. Business is struck through.
Right.
Oh, re- oh, I see, there's two regulars there.
Council, regular meetings.
Sorry. We'll get rid of one of the regulars. Thank you. Very good.
In, uh, let's see, in ten, on page ten, C, the agenda number one, uh, you talk about the, uh, let's see, the order of business being contained to the agenda prepared by the should be mayor pro tem, would it not?
That's existing language, uh, yeah, probably so.
Where we say that the mayor, uh, you know...
The actual official agenda is created by the city clerk's office. But it's, the order's prepared and given to them and they actually create the hard copy. It's kind of semantics, but...
So, so it's really the order of business as directed by the mayor pro tem or as created by the mayor pro tem is contained to the agenda prepared by the clerk is really in practice what the truth is?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make that more clear.
Thank you. And then I had a, I had more of a substantive on the top of page eleven. Um, and we're talking about, um, let's see. It seemed to me like, and I would ask my fellow counselors, that if we want to amend the agenda, that we would do that in sort of all cases when we approve the agenda. That if the city manager or another counselor wants to amend the agenda, that we would do that really only at the time when we approve the agenda. Instead of sort of before the public hearing and the second reading or, there's another one that it talks about, the, the city manager may add administrative and operational items to the agenda prior to the beginning of a meeting. I mean, I would think that for consistency and lo- and sort of understanding, if you want to amend the agenda, you do it when you approve the agenda. Well, it's not what we're, it's not what we're saying.
It's not.
And it says, it says the city manager can do it before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that makes good sense. So, then you know.
Then it's, then it's easy, you know, if you want to...
But is that a situation where you are adding a new item or if you want to lay something over to a subsequent meeting? Because I think you don't want to necessarily add anything to that.
Well, that's, that's dealing with, to me, that's dealing with an item that, that has come up during the normal course of the agenda and you're, you're dealing with the item. You're not dealing with the agenda. Well, or if you want to, if you want to take things in a different order, you know, so and so is here. Can we move this up on the agenda for some reason?
You should be able to add, delete, or...
Absolutely.
Change order.
Change order, anything.
And that often happens. You'll have a lot of people in and you realize you'd like to move that up on the, because you want to accommodate those people. Uh, well, I'm inclined to say at the bottom of ten, a majority of council members may also add, add or delete an item or change the order of the agenda at the beginning of a council meeting, under approval of agenda, period.
Yeah, under, yeah.
And then delete that last sentence.
I don't know why you would say at the beginning. Were you going to say at the beginning of the council meeting?
Uh, no, just, uh, under, yeah, uh, just reference the, uh, the term we're using, um, which is approval, um, approval of agenda.
Because that's when it naturally happens in the order of the business.
Okay, I'll use that as the proper term.
So, since, since we're kind of going by this paragraph by paragraph, can we bump up to number seven real quick on that page, page eleven? I was just curious. I mean, this, this reads kind of how we, we work it in practice and how we have for two and a half years. I was just wondering if we could take or requesting to introduce the item at the meeting out. I just think it would be awkward if Joyce has assigned, or Mayor Jay has assigned everything and then have it, I mean, I've never seen it happen in two and a half years, that someone would say, well, Tracy, I know you're reading that, but I'd like to read it instead. I just, I just think that would be a little awkward. So, I was just thinking, that's not how we do it in practice or request. I just think I'd like to see if people would be interested in or requesting to introduce the item at the meeting could just be deleted. Because I think we, how we do it in practice is without that.
Well, in the last term, people asked me at the meeting that they, I assigned it and then they came up to me and said, I don't want to do it or I do want to do it. Joyce did. She, she a couple of times, she said, I'm, I'm introducing it, not blank.
But I think that would still fall from, that would still fall in the first section. It wasn't in the middle, it wasn't at the meeting. So, it would still be in advance of the meeting. Oh, I don't ever remember that being done.
Someone said to me, I, well, you assigned it in the email, but I'd like to do it on the dais. They said to me before the meeting started.
Yeah, so that's kind of what that says. It says in advance of the meeting. So, it could be five minutes in advance, but it's not at the meeting.
Oh, I see, yeah.
See what I mean?
Advance the meetings, like, yeah.
So, I would just like to delete or requesting to introduce the item at the meeting. I don't know if people are open to that or not.
What conversation?
The only situation where that wouldn't apply is if a item is added to the agenda, at the reading of the agenda, and that's after the meeting started, then someone wouldn't be able to ask to introduce that then.
I think when that's happened before, usually the chair requests somebody to do that. They select somebody that's appropriate.
That wouldn't be in advance of the meeting, though. That's why the or is there.
Right, um, that's, okay.
Or maybe could we put or requesting to introduce that item at the meeting if added to the agenda at the meeting time or, you know, that's a lot of prepositions, but...
You might want to add it to the first, uh, sentence, the option, first option, goes to the representative council district to which the agenda item pertains or the council member initiating the item. Because sometimes the, you know, it doesn't pertain to a council district at all and then somebody wants to do something on leash law.
In practice, if you made a motion to add something to the agenda, you should be able to introduce it.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And that's, I think, been the practice, but it probably makes sense to... And then you can take out the phrase you're suggesting be taken out at the end because, because I think that's otherwise addressed. But I think Zach's point's true as well. So, we can add or the, to the first sentence, or the council member, uh...
Requesting additional agenda item or something like that.
The council member requesting or initiating the agenda item because that, that council member has initiated it in one of the various ways you can do it. All right.
I just had a few more. Thank you for bearing with me.
Okay.
We have the best council we've called on, bar none. On, on the next one, on fiscal notes, um, Mr. Pond brought this up. I think, I think this, uh, gives the city manager veto power on anything going on the agenda and think it needs to be reworked.
Uh, because if the city manager doesn't provide the item, it can't go on. Is that...
Prior to, prior to any item being placed on the agenda, the city manager, even if it's a non-fiscal note.
Where are you, bud?
On number, um, excuse me, on page eleven, on... It's eight, is it? Yeah, C eight, fiscal notes. Prior to any item being placed on the agenda, the city manager shall prepare a brief explanatory note. It shall have a reliable estimate.
You can make it easy and say, for, for all items placed on the agenda, the city manager shall. You could say, you could do that instead of prior to, and then it's...
Now, see that?
Yeah, because there's, uh, for all items placed on the agenda, the city manager may or shall prepare. Though it's an obligation of the manager and the manager's not a gatekeeper like the Denver City Auditor, yes, sometimes. It's good, huh? Yeah, there'd be some, well, I said mayor shall, meaning you guys choose, but there are going to be times when there really isn't a fiscal note to be prepared.
At, at the state level, that's one way that bills are killed is by...
Yes, it is.
Any kind of fiscal note on a bill kills it. So, that, I mean, it, in a sense, does provide a bit of a veto power, but it, that fiscal note would then be scrutinized, of course.
I'm happy to take out the words, pardon, any item placed, being placed on the agenda, comma, and make the sentence begin, the city manager may prepare. Does that work?
It works for me.
Okay.
On page twelve, at, um, probably F six, uh, we would take out the words prior to or at the beginning of any meeting and, and just have that at the time of the approval of the agenda.
Sorry.
This is about operational items.
My, um, oh.
On page twelve, um, F, F six? Or D six, excuse me, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, and what would the change be?
Uh, prior to or at the beginning of the meeting.
Uh-huh.
We would do that at the time of the approval of the agenda.
Gotcha, okay, um. So, so really it should be may add administrative operation items to the agenda. Prior to or at approval of agenda?
At the time of the approval of the agenda.
At the time, sure. In other words, at the time of approval, that would come, that would be next agenda item, the mayor would say, all right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? There'd be such a motion, city manager wave his hand, say, can I ask for your permission to add something to whatever? And that'd be included in that motion, that'd be where to do it, okay, add. Okay? All right.
All right, on, on page twelve, E.
Public hearings?
Public hearings. All speakers must sign up at the appropriate roster. If you're not on the roster, you don't get to speak, is that the way we do it?
No, in practice.
Well, then I suggest then we, we should use may or should, or can if you want to, or, but you don't, you don't must have to.
In that instance, for a public hearing, the speakers all have to, would be sworn in, therefore you would want to have some kind of record of who they are, or I don't know if there's any language on that roster sheet that they're signing.
There, there is the name and address, yeah.
There's a name, there's a dress, and there's a, um, uh, I think it's very helpful, because then you have a record of, you've got to conduct a public hearing, you've got a record of who's there and, uh.
I guess the question is, do you have, if you don't sign up, can you speak?
Uh, and I think that you can, and here's, here's why, what often, or what very occasionally does happens of a roster of people who have testimony, who's getting, who's, somebody came because they're interested, but they didn't sign up. But after hearing, you know, the various statements, they're getting inspired, and it's a public hearing, I think you really want to encourage people.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I've mentioned to, to the mayor that it's a good practice, when you've gone through the whole list, even if there's no one still standing, you know, waiting, you say, is there anyone else? Because, yeah, there's a percentage of time when there really is someone else, and you handle that by just having them speak. Sometimes we manage to get them to sign the roster and sometimes not, but the roster's really not as much a prerequisite to being able to speak as it is a handy means for us to have a record of who did speak. If you've got nine of the ten people that signed up and the tenth person says who they are, gives their name and address, then we've got a record, you know, both written and oral, and it's good enough.
Can we make it a duty of the city clerk to collect that information or to write that down?
We do ask their name and, spell their last name, they give their address.
And then that goes in the minutes.
Right, I think that the point is that we need to take that word must out in order to.
Yeah, I can make it may, because that's, reflects current practice.
Requested, right.
But you, you still want to.
You want to enforce that, that are, that are requested to sign up, something like that.
You, you still want to be able to make sure everybody's identified, that.
Right.
Anonymous person can't just get up and speak.
No, no, they have to give their name and, and spell their last name and give their address.
I like the are requested to sign up. Because very honestly, if somebody showed up and said, I'm not signing that, I'll tell you who I am and I'll tell you where I'm from. You know, I think, I, I'm not comfortable saying, well, sorry, you can't, you know, you've, you've got to let that person speak, I think you must. But it's fair for us also to, to, to know who they are so that we can create a record if it was here. All right, I'll make that change.
On, um, on G, time of adjournment, G one, acting by a three-quarter majority vote, is that of the whole council or those in attendance?
In practice, it's been the, the, the whole council.
Okay.
And I should say that here, because, uh, for years, we relied on that every two weeks, but, uh, not so much anymore. But it should be the entire council, so it's a pretty high bar to keep going after eleven.
Under, um, on page thirteen, room numeral five, four.
Yeah.
Starts, the sentence starts out, a council member who has been absent from a prior meeting may vote on a reconsidered item. Is that any prior meeting or the meeting at which the business had been discussed, or?
It's really the meeting which the business was, was discussed, because it wouldn't be, you know, doesn't matter if they've listened, no, and that's the only meeting that matters. I'll make that clear.
Shall vote on reconsideration. Affirms, that's a record here, she's listened to the recording of that agenda item. And that last sentence, do you mean it's prior to the motion for reconsideration, or at the time of reconsideration?
Um, let me see why you're asking. They need to, they need to say on the record that, that, um, I was absent, uh, there's a motion for reconsideration of X, Y, Z item.
Right.
And, uh, uh, that council member needs to be able to say, uh, I was absent for that, but I have since listened to the.
Right.
Tape and I, that allows them then to vote.
Right, but he doesn't need to listen to the tape before that motion for consideration is made, does he?
I, I think that the intention is that, that they do need to have, then they're informed.
Motion is made for reconsideration or before the reconsideration of the item?
Well, usually those are right at the same time.
At the same time?
Yeah, there's the motion to reconsider, that puts it, in fact, that just happened on the planning commission appointments, you recall, there were two motions, one to reconsider, meaning put it back on the table. Then there was, I think, a motion to rescind and then, but those were all right together, and so I wouldn't, I, I think it needs to be made a little clearer, but if you see that coming and haven't prepared yourself, then you're, you're not able to vote, I believe.
Okay. I guess I was thinking we might have had a motion to reconsider and then it was laid over.
Oh.
Yeah, I think that's maybe happened once or twice.
But this way it won't be able to happen.
Uh, but I actually would be okay with that, I mean, I, let me just do a little more drafting.
Okay.
Because I do recall, it's been ten years or so, but I, I remember that, yes, we're going to move to reconsider, that the substantive, what we're going to then do is going to happen in two weeks.
And before we do that, you've got to.
Plenty of time to.
Yeah, so you've got to go down and get the recordings. Yeah, okay, so you, you can vote to reconsider, but this, you can't vote to take substantive action on a reconsidered matter until you've listened to it.
Until you've listened to it.
Okay.
On the next page, or on page fourteen, uh, item two at the top, I'm not sure what number we're on, to be honest with you. Um, any person desiring to speak on agenda item must sign the appropriate roster. Once again, should or may or is encouraged to, or is invited to, or some.
Or requested to, is our language.
Yeah, okay. And on number six, is it the intent of the council that persons in attendance shall be allowed to donate time, or is it persons in attendance having signed up to speak? Can, or is that, are we splitting?
That rule's been, a little bit, that rule's been enforced, kind of informally, in the past, uh, ten, fifteen years ago, people would always sign up and they'd stand up and they'd say, I'm donating my time to so and so, but they were signed up. I think we did have someone just last meeting donate some time, and I'm not sure that they were signed up. If they're in the meeting, here in the room, I guess I'm, it's up to you, it's absolutely up to you, but I guess I'm less worried about whether they signed up or not, or whether they're able to say that they're donating time. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Very good.
Mr. Urban.
I had many of the same remarks that Bud had here, so he just took my thunder.
I'm sorry.
It was just almost word for word that.
Got to be quick when, with him.
As it relates to the structure of the rules overall, um, I would like to see the citizens' rights section be placed at the front end, because that is also just in the general order of the meeting, that's sort of the front end of the meeting as well. And its current location looks at more of an afterthought than a, the, the pinnacle, so to speak, so I would like to see the citizens' rights section be placed in the, placed as number, you know, or letter I, or, or room numeral one.
Okay with room numeral two, room numeral one being the authority for the rules?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That worked for Bud? No objections?
Then, um, as it relates to previous room numeral two, um, there are duties related to the chair, the mayor pro tem, city clerk, and the city attorney, but there's no duties for city council members. And so I don't know if there's any of the items that are related to a counselor's duties found elsewhere in the document that could be placed into a duties for a city counselor, um, that could be defined.
Well, they're, they're, fair question, I think probably the reason for this is that the duties of the mayor, mayor pro tem, clerk, attorney have to do with, you know, sort of preparing things and making sure things go to the meeting and happen at the meeting. Council members, uh, it's their, it's their whole meeting, and what you hear of here are more kind of rights and obligations, to be very honest, of council members. I think I'd struggle a little bit to find a duty separate and apart from the various rights and responsibilities that are sprinkled all the way through, because it really is the rules of the council.
I just.
Yeah.
I'm not stuck on that, I just.
Yeah.
Looking at the items that were listed.
Yeah, other than saying things like, you know, speak when your turn's called, respect other points of view and things like that, but.
Showing up sober, those types of things.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that should be a duty. I'd be inclined, I, I hear it, but I, I think, I'd be inclined not to create a section for that.
Um, that's fine. On page five, the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter, should be Charter.
Uh, what paragraph, sorry?
Uh, page five, uh, E three.
E three. Oh, thank you. Very good, thank you.
And then, uh, first, rule three, going on what Bud mentioned with respect to how it's sort of set up, we have the items A, B, C, and.
Sorry, uh.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at page six, starting with the, uh, rule three, there's.
A three?
I'm sorry, just rule three in general.
Oh, room numeral three, sorry.
Room numeral three.
Yeah.
So the, the first half of this rule, items A through E relate to meetings, and going off Councilmember Starker's, uh, observation regarding notice, um, there really isn't a procedures section of that, uh, rule, and so.
Of room and three.
So you could have the meeting procedure and notice requirements as the second half of that rule. That sort of plays off of that discussion regarding informal meetings and notice requirements and that type of thing.
Well, the, the whole rule three, and there's no magic in the organization, but, but you want it to make sense and kind of intuitive sense to people.
The, the first half deals with the types of meetings.
Types of meetings.
Second half deals with meeting procedures and notice, or some kind of.
And, and so overall, the title is council meetings and meeting procedures is the overall title for three.
And, uh, while there's discussion in the part E, the informal meetings regarding notice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would think of notice being sort of a procedural thing that could be its own section.
Mm-hmm.
Referencing, uh, sunshine law and those type of things, as a sort of a separate, it's important enough to have a separate, it may just be, uh.
So it's own room numeral.
Or le- letter within rule three.
Oh, I see, ah, ah.
Could I suggest that you may, that you maybe rename informal meetings E and call that, uh, you know, meeting notice, notices of meetings, or?
Meeting notice requirements. Okay.
Going on to page ten, item C two. The phrase for good cause shown doesn't.
Got anything.
Any favors. That doesn't tell you what that is, so.
I think you can start with by majority vote, I agree with you that.
And the majority vote would be the good cause shown.
Yeah, yeah, you don't, if you get the votes, that's how it is, you don't have to do, you have to be convincing, but that's how it is too, okay?
And just on the discussion around fiscal notes, I think it's important to allow the city manager to bring their expertise to the discussion regarding expenditures and whatnot, and it is a, um, a deal killer in some cases, but it has to be presented effectively, so.
It's information you need.
And then, uh, going to page fourteen, item A two, since we're diluting the roster requirement, that first sentence includes the requirements to confine their remarks to a relative item. I would want them to continue to con- confine their remarks to the appropriate item, but if we're removing the word must, then it also has a chance of diluting the, confining the remarks element to that.
Oh, I see, I, I see what you're saying.
So that needs to be either a separate sentence?
Yep, separate sentence. I'll make the separate sentence that will end with council chambers for the first sentence, start a new sentence, speakers shall confine their remarks to the, instead of relative, I think, maybe how about identified item, I'm not sure what relative.
Right, and then the other part of that sentence, there shall be no time limit applied to citizens' comments unless deemed appropriate by the chair, and there's really nothing defining that.
It is, it's based on volume of people.
Yeah, in practice.
But what I would want to say is that appropriateness based on their remarks, it is one thing to say upfront, everybody's only going to get three minutes, that's a different thing, but if you go to each person and say, well, what's your position, okay, you get two minutes, you get twenty minutes.
It's never worked that way.
Sure, so I would say at the onset or in some uniform fashion ahead of time, so that somebody doesn't come up and speak for twenty minutes and then all of a sudden you start.
You, you could say there's no time limit applied to citizens' comments on any given item unless deemed appropriate by the chair. And I think what we're trying to achieve here is if you, you discover that you've got one hundred and fifty people signed up on, on one, on a leash law issue, that the chair says, I, I recognize the, I'm recognizing reality here, it's, you know, it's, um, uh, it's, you know, nine o'clock at night and I've got a hundred people, and just doing the math, if you each get two minutes, we're going to be here until two. And so I'm going to restrict you all to one minute, so we're here till one, or something.
And that, that's appropriate, the onset of that discussion.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
It'd be inappropriate if it was halfway through those.
Yeah, and, and you said, okay, sorry, now we got to shorten down, yeah, I'm, I've been in meetings where that's happened, it's not a appropriate result. I'm happy to say on any given item, after comments. At the beginning? Okay.
Something like that, um, and that, that's all the comments that I had, again, Councilmember Starker took the majority.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I feel, uh, after, after these very detailed comments, I'm not, I just have a couple of conceptual things. On page fourteen, number seven, it would be, uh, six, item six, seven, the chair will entertain no written comment unless a member of the public is present to read them into the record. Uh, does that mean a, uh, deputized proxy, or does that mean just somebody off the street? Or does it mean it won't be read, period, um, if the room is empty?
Here's how it's applied in practice, uh, the, the rule has been, look, if you want a letter read, you need to either show up with your letter or have somebody, you know, show up, uh, that's going to carry that letter. letter. Don't send a letter and then expect that you didn't, you know, you just sent the letter, but you're commanding it be read into the record. It certainly has been sent, it's been received, but that, uh, you can change the rule if you like, but the sense of the rule has been-
So it's a proxy?
Yeah, you, you have to send somebody and that's fine, that, that's actually worked out all right, I think.
Okay.
So just a quick check in on that. So I know just recently, at least in my life memory, um, and, uh, Ms. Shaver, uh, read a, a letter at one point. So that would not be allowed then based on these rules? It would have to be a member of the public, the audience.
That's right.
Can a council member bring it in, Jerry?
Council member may read written comments into the record with the approval of the majority of council members present. So yes, council member could read it.
And the council person might read it?
And honestly, you could say a council member or the clerk if you like, again, with the approval of the majority of council members present. That's, you know, your, your call. It's not going to come up a lot and you're not going to waste a lot of time if there are random letters that come in that don't have sponsors, but it's designed to kind of cut back on it a little bit. But I, I could see adding, or the clerk, to someone that can read it as long as the-
Last week we had two people from the public read two different letters.
That's fine because-
Which is good.
Yeah, that's fine, they sent their person in.
Well, I had, Janelle's read, like, if I, like, if council member says, would you read this into the record, but it's from the council member?
Yeah.
Well, or statement, like, like, for example, Janelle has been asked by the, a council member to read a statement into the record for, for the record, which they've done.
And I'm okay with that. It's your meeting and it's your, you know, I mean, that's, the council member sort of choosing different ways to express him or herself and that's basic, so I think you, you must allow that. The only change I could think of based on the discussion is whether you want to recognize the clerk's role in reading a letter if a majority of the council member present allows it to be read, as opposed to just a council member reading it.
Should you also specify that those written comments are from somebody else, from the public? The council member may read written comments-
From the public.
Because right now it just sounds like-
Sure.
I think we ought to add something about, uh, representative of the letter writer or something like that, so. The, it's read by representative of the letter writer or a councilman reading for a constituent.
Well, let's take them in, in pieces to begin with. Chair will entertain no written comments. I think we probably should say from the public. Is that all right? Unless a member of the public. And then I, I, maybe you could say unless, uh, someone, well, a member of the public representing the author is present to read them into the record. That'll work?
Ir representative of the author, right?
Yeah. A council member or the clerk-
That's fine.
-may read written comments to the record with the approval of the majority. So this would be a situation where somebody's, somebody's written some letter, they don't have a representative, representative here, but a majority of the council says, yeah, that's fine, uh, we'll, we'll allow that, you know, we'll take a majority vote and allow that to be read in.
So you can email, you can email the clerk and say, I want you to read this into the record?
In all likelihood that the council wouldn't vote until they've already seen the letter.
Yeah, I, I think, no. No. And the, the truth is, you will get letter, if you get a letter addressed to the city council that's received here, the staff will make copies and you will all, right, that's a general procedure. If a letter comes in addressed to city council members, but, and it comes into the, to your office-
Ahead of time, yeah, if we get it ahead of time, a lot of times.
The general procedure is you'll make copies. The point I'm trying to make is that, that you will get that letter and you should. These are your constituents trying to communicate with you and there's no artificial rule saying, well, we can't see it unless we voted to see it. That's not true. What the vote is all about is whether time will be taken and get read into the record and a lot of people perceive that has greater impact. And sometimes they're wanting it read into the record because it'll come on the TV, might affect other people in the room. That's all fine, those are all fine motivations, but those are things that you can control under your rules procedure. I don't think you can or should control whether you know about the contents of the letter. You should get copies always, there's no question about that, and I don't think the rule changes that. It's just, do we make an additional oral record of it here? Some people have motivations for that and I, it's politics and I support the fact that that's how it works, you know? But you get to control how that happens.
That, uh, vote up or down on the reading of that comment during the public comment section, if it were, wouldn't preclude a council member from then reading that into the record during elected officials matters?
No, I don't, I don't think it would, no. I think ultimately you individually always have the power and I don't think you should restrict yourselves or you can, if you like, these are your rules. But I think, you know, if you've got a constituent sends you something, that, you know, I think you can do that.
Okay, to continue on page seven, um, under informal meetings, and we're now going to change that to notice requirements.
Yep.
Item two, I just want a confirmation that three or four people, council members could meet, uh, in an open, a meeting room that is open to the public, but without notice given. Is that legal?
That's correct, yes.
Is legal?
Yeah. The open meetings law says that, uh, when three or a quorum, whichever is less, and they wrote that to deal with county commissions where less than three is still a quorum, you know, two is, when three or quar- uh, three or, uh, three or quorum whichever is less equals a public meeting. And then it goes on, then it goes on to say, however, if you have a quorum or action could be taken, you have to have prior notice. So I wrote these rules some time ago with that in mind because it, you'll notice the five number triggers notice. So that and our, that allows our rules to harmonize with the state statute. So you're correct, three or four council members can meet, has to be open, the press wants to come in, but it's not advanced, posted.
Okay, and I just had, just sort of a form of clarification, what constitutes an open, what would constitute open to the public?
Uh, you leave the door open and if somebody shows up, you can't say, I'm sorry, private meeting. You say, come on in, sit down. If they say, I, I, is there a meeting, I'm here to attend that meeting, you, you have to say, it's right here, have a seat. You're not obliged to take public comments or anything like that, but you are obliged to let them or the press or anyone attend.
So if I left the front door of my house open, I could have council members over and discuss?
Yeah, yeah, you could.
I mean, that doesn't sound kosher in my mind, but, not that I wouldn't invite you guys over for barbecue or something.
It's permissible under the law. You can certainly make the rules, you know, you can go further than an open meetings law requires. This, this just pretty much, you know, lays out the open meetings law in our rules. You can make it more restrictive, some cities are more restrictive. Here in Wheat Ridge, we're more restrictive on executive sessions than the state statute. We can have them for fewer topics than the state statute allows.
I, I guess I would just, I would like to see the meeting location or venue be better described or, yeah, I would be comfortable with council members having a meeting at City Hall, but I would be uncomfortable with council members having a meeting at another council member's house where it's the, it's the expectation of it being public is what I think is concerning to me, that a, you could have a, a meeting at a restaurant, but you don't know that that's open to the public because it's not necessarily-
No advance notice is required.
Right. So I just, I don't know, I-
It's how the state law reads.
Okay, and the last item is a conceptual item and I'm asking the council members here, I'm not, we have nothing in here about the council forming committees. Took it out? We don't now, but we could form committees.
There was a whole section about standing council committees and that got taken out at the last discussion, which I didn't want to take it out because we, we could, could create committees on an ad hoc basis, remember?
Yes, uh, there's a charter provision allowing, I, I think, the creation of committees and advisory boards and, and, and so, and I can go get it. But the fact that it's not here doesn't mean you couldn't take a motion and set up a committee of some sort of your membership, of others. You know, these are council rules, but they're not a change to the charter, they're not a change to the code. And so you have the powers that are in that charter and code.
Mr.-
I just, I, uh, every, the discussion's been great and I appreciate it and Councilmember Starker and Urban left, left me a couple of, um, items graciously, um, which I know they actually picked up, but they just didn't want to say so. And it, it just relates, um, one string of comments is just about when you say regular meetings, sometimes you're saying, you're saying council regular meetings and sometimes you're saying regular council meetings. Councilmember Starker already showed you one of those on page nine, but on page ten, C three, it says regular council meetings. And in other places, prior to this, you, you're just saying regular meetings. On page eleven, it happens a couple of times. Paragraph seven on the top, which I think is C seven, says at a council meeting, which I think you meant to say regular meeting. And lower, um, in D one, it says, in the middle of the paragraph, uh, two items per month to be added to the agenda of a regular council meeting, which I think-
Just regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Yeah, good.
And then on page thirteen, uh, you do that again on, uh, paragraph two there, I don't know which one that is. Acting by majority vote, scheduling unfinished items for a future regular coun- or special council meeting. So I assume that just, you can take out the council.
Yeah, there's a, yep, got it.
I do know that Bud saw all of those and just didn't want to say anything. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Are we done or do we have any more? Come on Bud, can't you come up with one?
Nice job, Mr. Dahl. Thank you. You got, I'll, I'll run it, I'll run it through again and, uh, I'm inclined, it's up to you, but I'm inclined to put it in the, uh, uh, the next agenda I can get it done for. Do you want red line and clean or just clean version or just a red line? I don't care.
Clean.
I don't care. Yeah, and that's the version you're going to be using, a lot of people are going to see, it's going to be in the packet and might be easier if it were a clean version. I'll have a red line that will show the changes you made tonight, sort of handy in case you have a question. But that's how you'll see it. Thank you.
All right. Elected official reports, that would be places you've attended?
Staff reports first.
Staff reports first, he's insisting, okay, staff reports.
We have, uh, actually have several, so they're all short, but, um, very important. First one, I'm, just passed around a proposed schedule for, um, a community outreach initiative based on, um, the consensus that was reached at the retreat to, um, do some polling and, uh, talk to our, our community on, um, what they would like to see, um, in a potential ballot question for revenue increase and potentially what projects would be used for. We met with, uh, Seawald Handfling last week. It's a public affairs, um, group that, uh, helped the Commerce City with their, um, initiative last year. Um, this is a, um, a, um, schedule that they would, um, work on, um, up until, up until the city council, um, decides to or not to, um, put a question on the ballot. And then they would have to stop, cease work because the city can't, um, actively spend dollars and, and provide resources to campaigning. So this would be strictly for community outreach and some polling to, um, have a conversation with, with your community on, um, what you potentially might put on the ballot. So April through May, they, um, suggest, um, having one-on-one meetings with the mayor and council and, and staff and, and also actually doing a tour of the city, um, to help identify, um, potential projects that you may want to, uh, put on a ballot question for bonding. And then, uh, start with a community outreach, identifying community and business leaders that, um, maybe, um, want to be proactive and, and active in a, in a, a campaign down the road. Um, May through June, a community, um, or a, a poll would be conducted, um, and, um, based on what they learned in April and May and discussions with you, the poll that would help, um, develop a, at the poll questionnaire, um, to ask the relevant questions that you, that you, you want to hear back from your, um, your community. They would report out in, in June, July. June through August, um, would be a series of town hall meetings, um, district meetings, uh, whatever, coffee chats with, with the community to, um, present to them what, um, you're initially, um, looking at, um, potentially putting it on the ballot based on your feedback you got from the polls. And just continue hammering, um, until, um, the deadline to actually get ballot language to the county in mid-August. And their last bullet point or second to last is, is to leave, um, two to three weeks, um, at the end there for additional round of, of public meetings to, in case you need to tweak or amend your ballot language based on what the community's saying. So I think this is a pretty good schedule, um, that, um, I think would help us get information that we, you guys need to make a decision on, on what type of ballot question you might want to put on in November. Any questions or thoughts?
Were you going to have the one-on-one meetings with the mayor and council and do you think you could maybe, um, potentially reverse those so that-
Yeah, that's, that's why I verbally said that. I think those should go first so then, then we'd, because then you guys could give them ideas, these are things we'd like to see, then we could go show them in the community, you know, show them the rec center if that's something you want to look at and they can give you an idea if they think that is sellable or not.
On the fifteen to eighteen minute live poll, how is that connected? Is that a telephone poll?
It is, it would be a telephone poll.
And will they be able to co- contact people via cell phones? I mean, there's so few people with landlines anymore.
Yeah, I think they have a process now where they do, they reach out, we can get more information on that, but I think, yeah, be- because of that very reason, um, I think they have a process where they do get cell phone numbers also to reach out.
Because that's important because so few people have landlines anymore.
Yep. I agree.
More questions?
I have kind of a, maybe a procedural question. When it came to the fire district, I understand that property owners who may not have been residents in the city would receive ballots for that, um, uh, election. And so in this circumstance, depending on the, the initiative that's put forward, um, would that be the same where those property owners that may not be residents would be included in that type of poll or that outreach? Or is it clearly defined that this would be a ballot initiative where residents would be the ones voting and-
It'd be unlikely voters would be the target audience, um, unless you guys choose to do, go a different direction, but, um, that's, you know, your goal is, is to, is to poll those who are likely going to vote, um, unless you want to make, make it a bigger process where you're, you're just getting input from everybody. But, um, you know, it's pretty strategic to get, um, um, information back from those who are likely are going to vote. In, in, in the city, yeah.
It has to be just a property owner, it has to be in-
Yeah, they have to be registered to vote in, in Wheat Ridge.
I guess, uh, my lingering question there is with the, uh, fire district's election, a person ha- owning property in that district is an eligible elector in that case? Is that?
A person-
No, not, not live, but just own property.
Property tax, yeah.
Right, so, so in the, in this case, um, I guess it would be made clear early on whether it would be a mill levy or some other initiative.
That's part of the process. Um, the initial direction that I've gotten from council was to focus on the sales tax. Um, you know, we could always add questions, um, to the poll about property tax and such, but from the retreat, I thought the direction was sales tax.
I just, no, no, I didn't want to limit the discussion, but I was curious on that, so.
And then obviously all the town hall meetings and meet, uh, would be open to anybody, so, if they're going to vote or not. Um, the cost of this, um, I have budgeted, I have money in- Um, the cost of this, um, I have budgeted, I have money in my budget for this type of cost, it's 20, um, initially it came in at, uh, 32,000, I got them down to 24,500. For, this would be for four full months, um, so it's like, yeah, 6,000 a month is what their fee would be.
One, two, three, four, so a cutoff period for the city?
Yep, cutoff period, and then, you know, and the intent is, these, these folks could stay on and help a citizen committee, um, who would have to raise money and pay them through those sources if they would like them to help with the actual campaign.
All right.
Couple other quick things. You all received a letter, you should have, um, from the, the Jefferson County Public Library. Um, they are doing some work, um, at the Library Service Center, which is in Wheat Ridge. Um, they tore a portion of it down. Um, they were actually going to use the bill, use that portion that they tore down, but, um, it was determined to be structurally unsound, and it would require probably a million dollars worth of renovations to make it sound, so they decided just to tear it down. Um, and they're, they're moving some other stuff around in their facilities, but, um, so they had to pull a, a, a permit from the city to do this, and the, the use tax on the permit was, it was just over $3,000. Um, they're asking for a waiver of that. Um, I'm not sure if you all remember, we, our code does not, um, exempt anyone, um, including exempt institutions from paying building use tax. Um, however, council does have an out, council may approve waivers of the use tax imposed, um, through the Wheat Ridge Business, the BDZ Business Development Zone. The Business Development Zone, the criteria for that is that, um, that the project will increase future sales and use tax. Um, the project will have a public benefit to the community through public works, public improvements, or additional employment to the city. Um, the project will defer city expenditures for public improvements, um, and this project doesn't necessarily do any of those, um, but that, that would be your option, is to allow them to apply for a BDZ and, and see if that's something you'd want to approve.
This is for demolition?
Well, it's demolition and then, uh, demolition of a portion of the building, um, and then, um, some improvements to the site. There, they are, um, making improvements for drainage on the site, um, and then actually closing the building up that they're at the demolition point, um, so there is some use tax that they had to pay for, um, materials that they're using for the project.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Nistoli?
Well, at this time, I would not support waiving anything or having them apply because it's not a revenue generation type of project. They've mentioned in the past, they may be moving the Wheat Ridge Library out of Wheat Ridge and taking it to Edgewater, so I think at this time, I would say no.
And this is for the demolition, but are they rebuilding there? What's, what are they doing there?
No, they're just tearing down a, a portion of the building, they, they were going to use it, they were gonna move into and remodel it for, for space, um, for office space, um, but the building, it would have taken too much money, so they decided to take, it's just a portion of their building over there, the north. I've got some notes here, I talked to-
It looks like most of it when you drive by, but, so they're not rebuilding, is what you're saying?
No, not the portion they demolished, they demolished, um, they demolished the north building at the service center, um, but then they're gonna do some, um, moving, some other space around within that site, they have enough room, they decided they didn't need that full building.
So the-
Well, I, I would-
Oh, do we have some other discussion, Mr. Starker?
Yeah, I, I, I have a suspicion that the valuation that they're, they're putting in that drives the cost of the use tax, um, probably includes the cost of the demolition, which-
It does.
I really don't think that that's, that should be part of the taxable value-
Yeah.
-that they, they pay. Uh, you know, it sounds, which is probably if it's a building, if it's a building demolition, probably a significant portion of the, of the valuation of the work that they've said they're gonna do. And I, I probably would, um, would vote to sort of waive that, I guess.
Wouldn't that be determined by our department, whether that is, the demolition cost would be part of the use tax or not?
Yeah, that would have to be another code change we'd have to look at, um, 'cause that is how we determine, um, the value of the project does include those expenses at this point.
The demolition as well.
Our, our code currently, um, calculates it, that. It's 60% of the total value of the project is, is what, um, is assessed, um, and then it's 3% of that for our local tax rate, which you're very familiar with. Yep.
Other comments on this? Mr. Ra-
Whatever.
Mr. Pond, Mr. Pond.
Um, I, I would, I just wanted to say at least my feeling right now is, is not that they're not committed, uh, necessarily to, to the city, so, uh, that's not my, you know, that's not what my sense is. I'd support the wa- waiving of the fee.
Okay, uh, do we have any more? Sounds like we have a very, a variance of opinion here, so I'm gonna need to ask for a vote, and of course, uh-
Is this just something we could bring up on the dais?
They would, according to your code, they would need to, um, do a BDZ, fill out a business loans application, and that would have to be, um, uh, with my staff and the 1721. They've already paid the use tax, so this would be-
Refund, oh, then-
They're moving forward, and she did say when I talked to her, she said, you know, they want to keep a good relationship with the, with the city, and was, you know, they're not, um, saying they've done, uh, stopped their feet and throw a tantrum if you don't fund this, but, um, to stick with the code, it's, you have to, through the BDZ application. So that's kind of the question, I guess, if you want, if you think you want to support, um, rebate of this, we could give them direction to-
But it's really not following any of the codes.
It's not, uh, you know-
So, I mean, I think that's-
We've done it for others, um, I mean, senior resource center was a stretch under the BDZ, but we grew it up and up to, you may, you may say they, uh, it was difficult for that one too, but you did improve senior resource center.
I think-
Okay, so the choice is whether to bring it up in the dais and, uh, have them apply properly for this reimbursement. Can I get a consensus on that? Um, so yes, that you would like to bring it up, or raise your hand if you'd like to bring it up in the dais as an, as an item, uh, on the dais to agree to give them a reimbursement for their u- use fees. And they would have to go into the regular-
Agree, just to bring it up on the dais.
Yeah, sorry, uh, but just to bring it up on the dais as a proper application.
I wonder if we should just, I mean, I guess my question would be, going back to probably what you were gonna say before I answered, but, um, do we just kind of do a general poll? Because I hate to bring it up on the dais, have them both the BDZ-
Right.
...
All right, so let me, Mr.- Mr. Fitzgerald?
How about we finesse this entirely by just agreeing to give them a donation? Uh, just let them, they've paid their fee, just keep the fee, forget all the us, rest of the stuff, and decide on an amount and donate it to them.
Any other comment on that concept?
I, I guess I, I wouldn't be in favor of donating money to another government agency, uh, while they, they do great work, that's not necessarily a, a setup we want to, a precedent we want to-
A new territory, is that what you're concerned about? Okay.
Um, and I would suggest that while there is a public benefit and value to libraries, it's not a business enterprise, and it doesn't have that likelihood of, uh, the, the reason why you would grant a waiver in the business improvement zone would be related to the expectation that you're going to be getting that money back, not that we don't need that money to begin with. And, um, it's my expectation that this would be a budgeted item within their project that they expected to pay, and it's a cost of, uh, the process that they entered into.
Okay, are we ready to go back to the original request for a consensus? Could I get a, all in favor of, of giving this reimbursement? Raise your hand. One. All in favor of not then, we have, all right, seems like we already have a consensus on this.
Two more items. Um, staff has been working with, including Mr. Doll, um, our, our friends out at the Applewood Village Shopping Center. Um, you know, they are, we've been giving updates, they are looking at, um, doing some upgrades to the facility. The Wells Fargo Bank is currently vacant, exposed, and if the building where Old Chicago was is, um, basically vacant, um, the parking lot just below where Old Chicago is, is actually owned by Wells Fargo, um, and, uh, Regency is, is attempting to purchase that from them. Um, the problem is, we found out that there's a very small strip which is highlighted, um, in kind of an orange on your, on your paper, on your map, can you see that? Um, kind of in the center.
Hmm.
It's, it's a strip of property that, um, there's some title issues with it, um, it's, we're having difficulty finding the owner, there's some traces back to a, a defunct corporation, um, for this strip of property. In order to, to move forward with, um, the redevelopment plans, um, Regency would, would like to be able to purchase that, and there are several different options to do that through the county, um, through a tax lien, through a quiet title. I'll, Mr. Doll, speak to those, those takes some time, but there is another option that we'd like to propose to use that.
Uh, the property, it sort of came up on the radar because it's subject to a tax lien from the county that's gone unpaid, uh, that will go away, uh, in a couple of years. Those tax liens last for 30 years, and this is like 28 years worth of, but, um, uh, all of these are kind of timing problems, the, um, tax lien won't go away that fast, and they would like to clear this so that they can redevelop. Uh, they could certainly, uh, try to, to bid, but they're concerned that, that, um, uh, other bidders may, you know, for tax, other, other bidders may get in ahead, somebody that wants to work a deal and find a distressed piece of property. They've tried to find the owner, this is, uh, Wells Fargo has tried to find the owner, and as Patrick mentioned, it's a, a defunct corporation, um, they think maybe they found one of the people in a rest home in Westminster, but no, that turned out to not work out. Um, so the, there's the potential for a quiet title action, but to have a quiet, to do a quiet title action and say it's mine, come and get me, you have to have some basis for asserting ownership. The city doesn't have a basis for asserting, and we, city does not have any record title interest. Honestly, neither does Regency or Wells Fargo, it truly probably is owned by this corporation that isn't around anymore, so you can't try that. Um, the, the probably best angle that we've been able to think of is condemnation, either by the city or by the urban renewal authority. I think it better fits the urban renewal authority, you need to be able to have a public purpose to condemn, and public purpose to condemn for the city would be that we need to use it for a city purpose. Well, unless you wanted it for a road, city does not run water and sewer, so it can't be for a water and sewer line. Uh, the urban renewal authority, however, and the urban renewal authority law is empowered to condemn for various purposes, cleaning up bad title issues is one of those things in the statute, uh, and this frankly fits that. Um, and it, our, my recommendation is, if, if you want to help these folks out, that, uh, it would be the urban renewal authority doing it, they'd need an agreement with probably Regency, the shopping center owner, and Wells Fargo to pick up the costs of doing it, 'cause once, once they were entitled, then they can immediately go to the county and pay the tax bill. And, you know, then they're done with that, and you then have the urban renewal authority owning the property free and clear, and then it can transfer it pursuant to some agreement they previously have done with, with, uh, Wells Fargo or Regency, and it, it removes this. I think it's a reasonable task for the urban renewal authority, it's well within their control, does mean they'd have to condemn, and I realize we don't do that often in, here in the city, but I, I think this is gonna be one of the, the lesser controversial condemnations that you'd ever encounter. Not to say somebody couldn't show up out of the woodwork here, that is possible, but, uh, the, the bank has done a fair amount of research and has not really found anybody, so.
Over a long period of time, they've done such research?
Yeah, they've been working on it for some time, they've shared all their title work with me and-
It's been a tax lien for over 20 some-
Yeah, it's been a tax lien for that long, and if it's been a tax lien for that long, you, you know, it just hasn't attracted any attention.
How, how large a piece of property is this?
Five feet by, what is that?
Probably by 125 or 50, or something like that?
Yeah.
Is, is, are they not able to take it by adverse possession?
They don't-
Theory?
We discussed that, but-
We discussed that, the, I don't think the bank, because that slope is so steep, the bank really, I don't think can make a good claim that they've adversely possessed a little strip way up at the top, they, you know, they've got this parking lot down here, then there's this slope, and there's this little strip up at the top of the slope, they need to be able to allege that they've been using that, and they, honestly, they just haven't.
Have they been parking there, walking across that to the-
No, 'cause-
Not the slope.
'Cause it's a, the-
Slope of the parking lot right there.
Parking lot they use.
Yeah, the parking lot they, oh, I haven't been, I'm walking up the slope.
They don't walk up the slope to the piece that we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, creative idea, uh-
People would do rappelling and stuff like that?
I'm, I'm okay with it, if, if urban renewal can do it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's a good, you know, I mean, that's one of the reasons you have an urban renewal authority is to clear away-
Is this property under urban renewal?
It is. This, this property was added in, as part of the I-70 Kipling, um, URA, and, um, Corey Hoffman, who's the, the attorney for URA, is gonna bring this up to the board on Mace, at their Mace VI meeting to see if they want to move forward. And of course, as Mr. Doll said, Wells Fargo and/or Regency would, would pay the cost, um, I, I don't know if, as, you know, at, we, don't know if they need to reimburse all of our attorney's fees or not, if you just want them to pay for the property and the, the court fees or whatever it takes, um-
Yeah, I'd like to press them to-
But we could make them pay-
We're accommodating them.
We could make them pay for it.
It'd be nice to get hold on the thing, I think.
Get everything, okay.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, the, bluntly, having it out of the way will be, the, the, the cost of, our cost to make it go away for them, uh, will be dwarfed by the, kind of the value that is produced and the, the nuisance value that we have eliminated for them will be a much larger number.
Well, there, there is a huge benefit to the city to, for the city of getting this done for them, helping them, because it, it's gonna enable them to start the redevelopment of the site, which is gonna increase our sales tax, so, it's a good partnership.
If somebody does show up, that's a good result, 'cause then you can negotiate with them.
Yeah, yeah, if they show up, then we find somebody, and that's been part of the problem, they just haven't been able to, it's like punching a marshmallow, they haven't been able to find somebody to talk to. Okay, we'll, uh, communicate that, thank you.
Yeah, one more?
One last.
One more?
One last item. Um, so, uh, medical and retail marijuana, um, licensing and sales have been in, in place for, um, uh, retail more recently, for several months, and medical a little bit longer. Um, we've, we've had a few issues that have popped up, um, and, uh, we'd like to get some direction from council, if you'd like staff to bring back any proposed amendments to our code. Um, the, the two primary issues that we're, we're seeing right now are, um, facilities that, uh, are currently, under our current code, are, are allowed to, to be put in adjacent to parks. Um, we didn't, um, have a restriction in our code, a separation requirement from parks, so we do have one that went in next to Prospect, right? Panama, Panorama off of Kipling and 20, Paramount, we have too many P-parks, Paramount Park, um, so we do, we've had some, um, citizen neighborhood concerns about that. Then also, the issue that just came up recently, we also did not put in any, um, separation requirements for, um, the facilities that manufacture infused products and also the testing facilities. Um, our separation requirements are only for centers, the ones that sell, um, and cultivate, um, marijuana, but there's also a license for, uh, manufacturing of infused products and also, um, of testing facilities, and we did not put separation restrictions in there, um, and we've had a couple, uh, of those come up recently. Um, so, Mr. Doll's kind of been on the loop on this too, so he can add anything if you'd like, but, um-
Good question on that. If you, if we changed this so that on the parks, they couldn't sell their park, what happens to that business that's there already? Are they grandfathered in?
Like, it, it would be a, from a spacing standpoint, it'd be a non-conforming use, just like you'd, if you changed any other spacing requirement.
But they could stay.
They could stay, yeah.
They just can't make any substantial changes to their site.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to enlarge if they were abandoned for, you know, six months, under your non-conforming use provision, they go away. But, but you couldn't say, hi, we now changed the rules and you're out of here.
Ms. Davis?
So would this also apply to the property that's on Marshall? Over by Copperfield?
That's by the park, too.
It's right next to a park. I mean, it's kind of next to a park, I think there's, it's here and there's maybe a building here, but it's, it's, I mean, it's, I mean, I guess what's the definition of adjacent? I don't know if they're-
Well, I think we set limits, I think it was 1,000, was it 1,000 feet?
1,000 feet.
Um, right now- Right now, the centers have to be a thousand feet away from each other, from schools, a couple of other things, daycare. But these other types of facilities don't have those same requirements. They can, they can be adjacent to a park, they can be adjacent to a cultivation facility, a retail facility.
I'm wondering, is there a way that we could take what we have and kind of do the thousand-foot circle and see who? I mean, I, I'm fine with making the change, also fine with adding the other groups, but I just want to make sure we know who it's going to impact.
I think originally why we didn't include parks, I don't think we had a huge discussion about it, but I think if we would have included parks as part of the separation requirement, there probably wouldn't have been anywhere in the city that a place could have gone. And I think then we might have, you know, we probably should have just voted them out, I guess, and not allowed them at all if we were going to do that.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I've been involved in that particular situation and this is a very high-quality business. I, I do not want to place so many restrictions that, that marijuana businesses can't locate in the city. There've been virtually no problems and I do recognize there is a group of people who were upset by that business, but there've been no, no actual reported incidents or complaints, so I don't want to over-restrict.
Well, it's my understanding that some of the concerns have been their advertising on their property and I thought they couldn't outdoor advertise by state law. Is that true? Or am I mis?
Well.
I mean, you can't like, they're standing on the corner and they're waving the sign. I thought they couldn't do that type of advertising.
Yeah, though that's the classic commercial advertising in a, in a public space. And, you know, they're going to be able to do that no matter what. That's really the kind of advertising you can have onsite.
That's fine, and the other.
Sidewalks aren't onsite, they're a public sidewalk.
Well, then the other concern I have is if we pass this law, the ones that are still there are going to be able to stay there and they're non-conforming use and they can still sell their business and continue, right? As long as they're not open for six, they're not closed for six months.
Yes, I think that's right.
So, why would we, I mean, you're passing a law that's really, I don't want the residents to get this false sense of, oh, we've took care of the problem, but they're all still there a year from now and nothing's changed. And then they can sell and they can do all their.
Just won't allow any more, that, I think.
Yeah, but see, there's, there's one over at Forty-Fourth and Field, which is across from Anderson Park and that's, that's less, that's less than a thousand feet away from Anderson Park. So, you're going to basically legislate them all out of the city, but if they sell their business and they don't close for more than six months, they can stay, right?
Yeah.
So, I, I kind of agree with Mr. Fitzgerald. I don't see the point of changing it now.
Okay, that's with respect to parks.
Right.
Right, and I assume, you want to talk about the.
Manufacturing and testing facilities.
I didn't want to skip ahead.
Just on the issue of being located near a park, I think the complaint that was brought forward to council, the public comments section spoke to the wafting of the aroma that came from the business. And I don't know if there's a way to require air scrubbers or some other, you know, I don't know if there's a way to.
Regulate that.
You know, the, I don't know if there's a way to do that. But that, to me, was a specific complaint that came forward was having kids playing Little League baseball and smelling marijuana. I don't think that that's appropriate, but I don't know how to get through that issue.
We've, we've addressed that issue with another facility years ago. We just went and talked to them and asked them to, we told them there was a concern and they, they made some changes to, to, to impact that smell. But I don't think we, there's anything that regulates odor in our code.
No, although you certainly have the, you certainly have the right to get into that arena for marijuana. And there are other cities that have done more with, you know, requiring filters, et cetera. And that's, that's kind of the nature of the regulations on the operation itself, which we don't get into heavily here. But other cities have and there are ways you can deal with that, if there's an interest in that.
On the manufacture of, of marijuana-related products, then we're talking about bringing in bulk marijuana plants, I assume, that are grown in a different location, transporting them to a manufacturing facility and then processing them and, which to me is sort of boiling or whatever else you do, so.
Infusing, you know, infusing.
Making edibles.
Distilling and making edibles and that sort of stuff. And then in the, so the, so the character of that manufacturing process could be considerable. I mean, it could, you know, it could be, I mean, that's a real industrial sort of product, if you will. And then the testing looked to me a little more benign, because then you would be bringing in, I assume, samples.
I think so, yeah. Sort of like, the best analogy would be a lab.
A lab.
You know, and we've got lots of them, usually in, in, in industrial districts. I can pull our code in a minute and see where we allow the, well, I think how we would classify manufacturing and testing would be as probably light industrial under our code. I'll have to look and see what zone districts. Right now, that's, you know, we don't treat them any differently than other labs and other kind of light manufacturing.
Right. And then, and so the question is, I mean, is the question, do we, do we want to change or how do we want to regulate these? Because we haven't heretofore addressed that issue.
That's right.
That's what's at issue.
Mainly the separation requirements.
Yeah, and that's how it came up, because, you know, there's people who are applying for, because you still have to apply for a marijuana license under our licensing scheme, but the licensing authority is the Tax Division here. Her job is to, first box to check is, is it permitted by the zoning? And for the retail operations, you look at just those thousand-foot circles and spacing, but for testing and manufacturing, those circles don't matter. And it's just, does the underlying zoning, C1 or whatever, I1, allow it? And then the question came up, well, gee, that means we're going to have manufacturing in places that retail couldn't be and what about that?
And then would we, is there any part of that process, either in the testing or the manufacture of it, that we, that we extract a fee of, you know, a tax or, other than, like an annual licensing fee?
Just the license fee and any use tax that they, any, any product that they use.
Do we have an excise tax that?
No, we don't. We, we didn't go there. That's, that's a policy discussion you could have.
If that's, that's possible.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Pond?
Couple, couple of thoughts. I'll just go backwards to the questions. Actually, I, I don't know that putting distance restrictions on the manufacturing or the testing locations is necessary. I think in the case of manufacturing, the transportation, delivery receipt of all that product, from what I, what little I know is very restricted by the state. And, and so, how they transport it, what they transported in, how much they transport, all that stuff is, is restricted in a very specific way. So, I'm not, you know, I don't, you know, see the need to, for the same location restrictions on, on both of those things. That's just my opinion on that. You know, as for the, as for the parks, I was on the planning commission when I know we were going through these initial, these initial things for the, for the medical marijuana setbacks and, and locations. I'm, I'm not sure why it, the parks wasn't, wasn't brought up, but I, I do know that, that, that the restrictions that we did place on were highly restrictive in, in a lot of ways, more restrictive than other communities. I, and of course, one of these is in my neighborhood and I appreciate both the residents who have come to share their opinions about it as well as the business that's in, that's in our community. And so, you know, that's obviously important to understand both of those things. I, you know, tend to agree that the, these, these things like, that may not perfectly fit within a straight thousand-foot setback example. So, if we do go down this road of trying to, to look at this, thousand feet isn't necessarily the metric that, that I think would be appropriate. You know, the example across from Anderson Park, I think is a good tenet from what, what, what I, what little I know, that providing a landlord with, with revenue and, you know, I, I haven't heard negative, negative things about that. I, I get it in all the cases, whether it's smell, their presence in a neighborhood or adjacent to a park. I do think all those things are very important and need to be, and need to be addressed in, I suppose, in a way that we would normally address a business, doing business in our community in a positive way. And I suppose the things, as we move forward at this, whatever that looks like, that I'm going to want to talk about is, 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 is just that. Have we run out of, have we run out of the options to conduct a relationship with the business in such a way that, that we're, we're having a partnership for the benefit of the community and have to then resort to policy in order to, to create good neighbor, you know, good neighbor relations? I'm not sure we're there yet. That's my, that's my, that's my point.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, I guess my suggestion would be to council, it's nine-thirty and this kind of came up under, you know, staff reports. I'd rather see this discussed more fully at a study session where we had some backup material. We could kind of talk about it fresh-minded rather than try to hash it out now at nine-thirty at night and try to figure out what we're going to do with these. Except for the two people that's come in and complained, I haven't, I have to agree with, with George and with Mr. Fitzgerald. I mean, let's get this at a study session where we have some data and we have some information options rather than trying to shoot from the hip now at nine-thirty.
That, that was intent, just to bring up the concerns we've been hearing and to ask if you want us to bring this back or, or sit on it and wait for a while till we get more information.
Could that data include something about filtering systems since that seemed to be one of the problems? Somehow we, we work with these, with our, with our vendors.
Include anything you want.
Right, and.
So, my question is, will these licenses be approved or not approved until we make a decision?
They'll be approved.
They, yeah, they, they're already approved. Well, there's some in process. They'll, they'll be still going through the process and will be approved.
Then what are we deciding?
If you want to make any changes for future applications to not. Or not.
It's my understanding that the businesses that are, if we change the rules, they're going to still be able to run and operate until that building is empty for six months. So, it could be years before these rules even took effect to any of those businesses that are currently there, like at Paramount Park.
Yep, it's true.
So, you might as well do it right and look at all the options for smell and odor. I thought that one of the complaints was, was that people were standing out there waving these medical marijuana signs and that was.
That was one of them.
Agitating.
There was numerous complaints, the odor, that, just being next to a park, kids seeing signs.
But I mean, it's not any different than a liquor store, I guess, or anything else in the community, so.
And I should also tell you that the locational restrictions dictate whether the use can happen. And that, if, if you allow it, then you create the entitlement to a non-conforming use. Things like odor, you know, we impose new rules on existing businesses all the time and usually you, you have a phase-in period or something. But if you wanted, I think in fairness, you need to know, if you, if you wanted to impose air scrubbing rules on existing operations, you could enact that, give them some time to, you know, prepare for it, but that's not a, a non-conforming use. They don't have, they're not grandfathered to the kind of scrubber they have now.
Well, let's see, what I, what I know is that the business at Forty-Fourth, the landlord put the restrictions in that they can't advertise on the sign on the, on Forty-Fourth. Their landlord put a lot of restrictions on the business itself, which any landlord could do, is what I'm saying.
But is the, is the issue that with respect to manufacturing and, and testing laboratories, that we haven't, we haven't made the, the same zoning or same geographical distinctions that we have for, for retail operations?
Yeah, that's the question and do you want to?
So.
You've got a basis to make the distinction.
So, do we, do we, so then we have applications for these businesses to operate and we, then they can go anywhere in our, you know, in a, in the, if the zoning code allows for it?
Same, same zoning as, as retail, but it's just, there's no separation requirements. They can, they can go five feet away from another facility. A re, right now, with your retail operations, they have to be a thousand feet apart. But, but the testing and the manufacturing, there's no separation requirements. From anywhere, from schools, from daycares, from parks.
Yeah, I, I, and I think, I think we should. I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, sort of start this discussion this late at night. But I'm also not, I would, I would not like to, it, for it to go forward before we have an opportunity to opine and to look at, to look at what's reasonable. So, I, you know, I'm almost thinking that I would like to sort of bring forward a motion for a moratorium of some type so that we don't get, so this doesn't get ahead of us.
Yeah, we'd have to go to a regular meeting, but we could bring it to.
No, but I'm, I'm saying whatever that, whatever that looks like, I mean, I would like, I would like to be able to discuss this issue before we have, before we're, have, you know, the horse is out of the barn and, you know, and maybe the rest of the, the rest of the herd doesn't get out. But, I mean, I, you know.
You mean, you're referring to future businesses? When you're suggesting a moratorium, you mean to additional new businesses?
I'm, I'm talking about if we have applications now, that, that we should understand the context about where we would like them to locate in our city, then we should, we should put a hold on the approval of those applications until we're able to discuss that issue. And if we need to make a moratorium and, and I'm suggesting that we need to, to do that at the, at the earliest appropriate time.
I guess the other element of that is to understand what the current expectation or standard is for the application processing and is there any outside limit on how long it takes to process an application? And in considering any application, is it inappropriate to do due diligence? And part of that would be to come to council to get advice on how to proceed?
Well, I should, I should say, you've created the Sales Tax Division as your liquor lic, or as your licensing authority for this purpose. And there, there are standards for saying yes, no. One of those is, is of course, there's a good cause for denial, but these are all decisions that are made by, in that case, that is one person, who's the, who, who is the liquor licensing authority. If that's denied, there's an appeal process under your ordinance to a hearing officer. But there's not a spot for, looking like, the licensing authority comes and says, what do you think about this license? Because honestly, that wouldn't provide the appropriate due process to the licensee. They've, you know, they see what the system is and they live by it. But, and the standards are, I won't say they're, they're easy to satisfy, but, you know, they're fairly straightforward and they're not that subjective.
Well, and the state's the licensing authority for the retail.
Yeah.
They have to get a state license first.
They have to get a state license as well.
I guess what I was pointing to is if there's a general timeframe that it takes to process an application.
Sure.
There's no outside limit on how long that takes to process an application. And if, if we can hold off and make any decisions on those until we can better understand that, that there's no.
It's essentially a moratorium, I guess.
I, I would tell you that if, I wouldn't want to give sort of informal direction. Sales Tax Division, slow these down while working on this. You know, I think that's not fair to the applicants. And what I would do would be, if you want to go there, it would be a moratorium that you would enact, just like, I think we, I think we had one in place where we were developing the regs a long time ago.
Sure, yeah.
Same thing, and it would be moratorium on the, on pending or new applications for testing and manufacturing facilities, understanding you probably are all right on retail. And that would, that would then, if I'm the licensing authority, this person, then I wouldn't have the authority to act. Those, all those applications would be frozen. I wouldn't accept any new ones. That's how the moratoriums read until you had acted.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
You know, I'm, I'm not quite understanding the problem here, because a testing lab is always a testing lab. So, why make a distinction between a lab that tests groundwater and one that tests marijuana? And the same with a commercial kitchen manufacturing process. I, I have no objection to mandating charcoal filters for smell if that is required, but otherwise, we don't have a problem and I don't anticipate any problem. I, I don't see any reason here to, to deal with this.
So, can I cast for consensus that this will be brought back to a future study session with some more information and more backup material at the discretion of the city manager and the mayor pro tem and the city attorney? with some more information and more backup material at the discretion of the city manager and the mayor pro tem and the city attorney?
Yeah, it'd be, be good to focus in an area. I mean, if you just wanna look at testing and manufacturing, or do you want us to look at retail and parks, or...
We still have, we still have another question under, Mr., Mr., uh, Mr. Starker asked for a, some sort of a minor...
Moratorium.
Moratorium, I can't even say that. I have a cold. Moratorium, whatever that word is.
Moratorium.
Yes, right. Can we answer that question, or, uh, do we need to go to this question? The reason is, is there's subjects floating around that we're not getting answered.
Well, how do you make a moratorium when you don't have the information that we're talking about?
Well, what I'm hearing is that we're wanting to look at this a little further. This is what I'm hearing, is that we would like to see if we make some regulations as far as filtering, uh, et cetera. I don't know what else there is. And the question has, and that may be the only question that we wanna do. The other one was, is, do we wanna hold to have a moratorium, uh, in the interim until we get to that decision, which is always down the road, uh, to, to stop any further companies coming in? Or not stop them, but at least hold them to where we, at least warn them that we might have some filtering-type regulations? Yes, Mr. Starker?
Well, my, my point, and I understand Mr. Fitzgerald's, you know, point of view on this. We, we did with medical marijuana and with retail marijuana, we had a pretty, we had a moratorium, we had a pretty extensive discussion about, about where, where we wanted these operations to be located in our city. Now, apparently, we have some applications for different types of businesses, for this laboratories and for manufacturing facilities. Um, and, and I guess my mind is thinking, you know, in, in, uh, to give the applicant due process, that, uh, that unless we make affirmative steps to, to put a, a proper hold on it, to give us the time to, to discuss it, uh, then the, the, the licensing authority in our city doesn't have any other recourse but to sort of, "Well, there's no regulations against this, so here, I'm gonna go ahead and give you your license," while we're, you know, while we have not really had the opportunity to understand the issues. That's why, you know, I would, I would be in favor of bringing back a moratorium at the, or bringing back a resolution or, or whatever appropriate things at the next council meeting, uh, so that, so that we can, so that we can then have it, have a, at least a little bit of time to discuss the issue and understand what the implications of the issue are, and then we can move on to a, to a rational decision based upon, uh, our ability to look at the facts and what's best for, for our citizens.
Your citizens.
And not, and not put our licensing person in, in a bit of a, you know, in, uh, in a bad light for not being able to do, um, his or her, his or her job with respect to licensing these facilities.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, uh, the thing is, is if you're gonna put a moratorium on, it should be for thirty days, and that's it, because we have applications pending, businesses are applying.
That's, that's, all I wanna do is...
So a thirty-day moratorium.
You know, that's fine. All, all I'm, all I'm saying is that I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, "Well, we didn't get a chance to discuss that on, on Monday, the twenty-first, and so on Thursday, the, uh, the license went out." So the thirty days is fine with me.
On, on manufacturing and testing facilities.
All right. Do we have a consensus on that? Uh, I, do, do you want to have a, hold a...
Moratorium.
Moratorium, all right.
Scott's come back for final approval.
Yes.
I guess my...
Thirty days.
The logistics of that are, if there's current applications pending, and we cannot vote on that this evening, so how, meaning...
They'll continue being processed until it's approved by council, the moratorium.
And it would take the form of an emergency ordinance, because you need to, that's one hearing, one reading, be next Monday. Uh, and it would apply to all applications that are currently pending and any new ones. So I, I don't, I'm not sure how many they've got stacked up, but I doubt, pardon me, that you'll have a lot of... That's about as fast as you can do it anyhow, frankly, and so if something gets approved tomorrow, it gets approved tomorrow. That's the way it is. But to get a moratorium in effect one week from today isn't bad. Uh, that moratorium can extend for as long as you like, want it to extend, understanding that if you're gonna be having a study session, then possibly drafting regulations that will mean a change potentially to the spacing requirements for manufacturing and testing in the code, that's a code change. It's a chapter twenty-six code change, uh, because it involves zoning, that would have to get reviewed and approved by a planning commission before it came to you for first and second reading. So you would, I think, you clearly need more time than the thirty days, but what you could do is, you could have that emergency ordinance, you could have your study session decide if you're moving forward. If you are, then you extend the, uh, moratorium to allow you to finish drafting. If you've decided you're not gonna make any changes, after a study session, you let the moratorium expire. Uh, that's, that's how it is, and you can always extend the emergency ordinance, you know?
You can also pass the changes by emergency ordinance and then pass them again, right?
Y- yes, although because there are zoning changes, they still would need to get reviewed by the planning commission, so that, honestly, that'll take more than a month. You know, I would put a moratorium on for ninety days, and if you need less than that, you have your study session, you say, you say, "Based upon this, no problem, no change," then, uh, you can act to repeal the moratorium.
Okay. Is that comfortable for everybody, that we put a moratorium on for ninety days, and then if we move through it quick, quicker, then it would be, it'd be, well, you'd have to actually change that. You can't just let it expire, 'cause then...
I, I can't vote for that, 'cause I don't know how many applications we have, I don't know what we're even looking at. We're putting a moratorium on one business, twenty businesses, twenty applications, so I, for me personally, I don't, I think it's policy myself, but...
I think we owe it to the citizens to do the moratorium, to get the information, and then make an informed decision. So I support the moratorium.
Okay.
I oppose the moratorium. I don't see, I don't think we have a problem, I don't anticipate a problem. The lab's a lab, the kitchen's a kitchen, let, let it be.
All right. All right, so all in favor of the moratorium, please raise your hand.
Bringing the moratorium to the council.
The ninety-day moratorium.
Consensus, direct city attorney, bring forward a moratorium next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yes, yeah.
Exactly, thank you. Are we good?
All right. Question? Do you think that we would be able to have, um, a presentation at our next study session relative to this issue?
Yes, we'll look at the schedule, um, and get it on as soon as possible.
Good, I think that's a good idea. Anything else? You got any more surprises for us?
That's it. Thank you very much for entertaining those.
That was a load. Okay. All right, last item on our agenda is, um, elected officials' reports. Do we have any of those? Ms. Davis, or...
Well, you beat us down, so no. I, I just have that I passed around as a sign-up sheet for the Gazette. I, um, contacted Tim today to try and get the number of words and due dates and that type of thing, uh, but he didn't respond yet to me, so I'll follow up. When I type it back up, I'll follow it up with everybody as far as that. I think most of us know those dates, 'cause we've done it before, but, just in case.
It's usually like five hundred words.
I'd bet the, that's city council. All right, Ms. Langworthy?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Uh, nothing.
Nothing. Nothing tonight, thank you.
That's consecutive, I like.
I'm good.
Nothing?
We've got about a half hour.
Motion adjourned.
All right, it's, we're adjourned.